Here.
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 We'll hold off on the pledge until we come out of this session. Carlos, sing as this is your farewell. All right, we're back from executive session, which we started at 7:00, now it's 7:30. We skipped a pledge of allegiance so that we could do it with all of you, and so if you could rise, do the pledge of allegiance.
Behind you.
Right behind you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, so we're lucky enough to have a presentation by Mr. Intoska, Mr. Corman, for one of our Valley View students.
Good evening.
We have a microphone over here so you can be in the video.
I usually don't use it.
I just want you in the video.
You're using the video. I'm trying not to be in the video. That's for my... Tonight, I don't know if any of you saw Mike Scorivaca in the Daily Record. He's developed a game in his social studies class, and it's a very involved game. It involves coding, it's been picked up, and I'm gonna let Mike tell you more about it, by a company who he's assigned the game for, and he wanted to give you a little presentation tonight to show you what he has done and the steps he has taken to develop the game. He developed it in Mr. Loyd's class. The Loyd's is right there, social studies. And, you know, Mike's just one of those students who consistently goes above and beyond and makes us very proud. He does our morning announcements, and even though I try to pull the papers out of his hand when he's reading, he still gets through it. And it's also, I mean, you know, he's funny. He's, as an eighth grader, you know, we're still trying to figure out if he forgot his lunch or not, and Mom's still covering for him, but we'll get to the bottom of that one. But Mike has developed this game, and we wanted to give him an opportunity to show it off tonight. Michael?
Michael, you want to stand at the podium, or do you need to be at the computer?
I'm gonna stay at the computer.
Okay.
Patrick, would you swing the camera around? So you can get Mike.
So we can get him doing it. Not too close.
It's good. It's bad.
I can just turn the volume down. into and are able to quiz their students to review. So you can have, you have two students come up to the smartboard. This is usually played on a smartboard. So you have them come up and put their name in and pick their team shape. I'm just gonna put this down. So you have two students come up to the smartboard, one student on the left and one student on the right, and they simply both click "ready." And it's simply a race, and when you get one question right, you speed up a little bit. The more questions you get right, the faster you move. And it's a race between two students to see how many questions they can get right in a row. But if you get one wrong, you stop. And it's a race between them to see how many you can get right. And once you reach the end, it displays some graphics and you can just basically show who wins. It's relatively simple, but I made, at the very beginning, you're allowed to, you're allowed to choose us from a text, to upload from a text file, and this allows teachers to upload their own questions. So this is, this is basically all the questions that can possibly be loaded into this game. So it has the question, and you get four correct answers and the right answer, which is number three in this case. What else was I gonna say?
I wanted to speak about that company and how that...
Oh, this, I made this game, this game was just for a social studies class. I was given this for a project, and you had to make an interactive presentation to present your topic, which at the time was the Constitution, but I took this further and made a vocab game out of it. I was, I later, I later took this and put it onto this site called Teachers Pay Teachers for $5, and... Another game I had made a while ago, which I'm still making right now, has been taken into this company called Steam. It's basically this online game platform that everyone comes onto, buys games, downloads them, plays them, shares them with their friends, and to get your game onto Steam, you have to go through this process called greenlight. And the community basically looks at your game, views your trailer, plays a little demo, and they vote yes, I would buy this game, or no, I wouldn't buy this game. And depending on how many yes votes you get by the end of the month, they will let you put your game onto Steam, or they're, they'll say they'll leave you another month. And so back in June, I got my game accepted to go onto Steam. Not this one, but another one that I had made. So that's probably gonna be coming out maybe March, February next year for like 10 bucks.
And this is all part of the coding?
Yes. I use this program called Unity 3D to code these programs, and I use C#, which is basically the programming language that Windows runs on. And Unity is a free program, but, I mean, so...
That's good. I don't know if you wanted to speak about, we did the Hour of Code.
I was just gonna ask, Mike, what's taking the Hour of Code?
I wasn't here for it. I had a swim meet.
You missed out.
I missed it.
Did you do it last year?
Ah, I think I had a swim meet that day, too.
That same week.
Yeah. December 14th, wait, December 14th today. December 11th, yes.
We're trying to make a big deal out of the Hour of Code. It's, it was done by 190 million people worldwide. I think it was 190. Sorry, 166 million people did the Hour of Code. It's a, it's a specific thing, and we, we got some nice help out from the, from the regional school, the kids, the computer science kids came down, helped our guys, and it seemed every single kid in the district did some kind of coding last week. It was just to really highlight that, that that's an important thing, and everybody should kinda have a little bit of exposure to it, so. This is great, so you've taken it to another level.
Yeah, I, there's this website called Code Academy that I basically, that's where I started. I started back in fifth grade. I learned JavaScript, which is a really simple programming language, which is basically English, pretty much. You say, "If this is true, then do this." So it, that was a very simple language that I spent my time doing. And then I, then I decided I kinda wanted to make games, so I just looked it up on YouTube and then just watched hours on hours of YouTube videos in my spare time, so.
You know, the one thing that strikes me is you keep using the word "simple," and I think that totally sells yourself short, and what you did. It's not simple at all. You did something that's really fabulous, and I think that you should say, you know, all the work that you did to do that, there's, how many people here, 40, 50 people here, and 49 of them couldn't do it, and you did it. So congratulations, this is fantastic, thank you for doing it.
Great job.
So we, is this, so we also have a demographics report.
Paul's still...
Paul, you done or not?
You're done?
No, I'm done.
Nothing else to say?
No, nothing else.
How do you follow that? How do you follow that?
I know, I'm...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, thanks. We, the board asked for, or worked with the superintendent to get a demographic study done, and so we are now here with Mr. Haber to present that to us. Mike's yours. Just make sure that's on.
Testing, going to, okay. Really tough act to follow. So, okay, anyway, the, I started talking to Steve a long time ago, but I guess in the summer, about some concerns that the district had, especially regarding the trailers, learning cottages, and what could be done to maybe, you know, change them, get rid of them, do whatever. The main goal was to see, is there a way to get children out of those, not use them as any kind of instructional level to keep children out of them. I'm not sure, they're 12 years old at this point, Steve, the trailers?
Yes.
Yeah. At this point, they're 12 years old, kind of in need of major renovation to make them usable. So again, I was asked to take a look at the demographics of the school district, the enrollment of the school district, where the enrollment is going, and to see if there are any way to modify the use of those, of those trailers, and see how programs might be able to move around. So what I wanted to do tonight is do a quick review of my findings, and we'll go from there. First slide, please. Okay. As you may or may not be aware, the enrollment of this district has declined fairly significantly over the last few years. The baseline, the way I do enrollment projections is I look at six years of enrollment history and do a calculation to determine what percentage is the district either growing or shrinking, and then use those to project, to project enrollments into the future. The methodology I use is called the cohort survival method, and it is the method that's prescribed by the state of New Jersey. So I follow all the guidelines of the state of New Jersey. As you can see, in the base year of 2010-11, where it says "district," there were 1,856 students enrolled in the Denville Public Schools. By the opening of school this year, or actually by the official enrollment date, which is October 15th, that enrollment declined to 1,674. That's a total change district-wide of about 182 students, decline of about 182 students, or about 9.81 percent of the total population. The projection going out to 2020 and '21, it's a five-year projection, is 1,570 students, which is a decrease of 104, which is slightly less of a decrease, or about a 6.21 percent decrease. So the enrollment decline that's continued, that began years ago, is gonna continue at least five years into the future. Okay? Now, I also broke it down by the three individual schools. Lakeview Elementary in 2010-11 had about 728 students. 2015-16, which is the current school year, it opened at 693, which is a decline of about 35 kids, or about 4.81 percent. The five-year projection is that decline is going to continue at about the same rate, about 4.62 percent, which is not, you know, okay, which isn't too bad. Riverview was 459 in 2010-11. It declined to 378, a loss of about 81 kids, or about 17.6 percent. The decline is projected to slow down, to kinda level off a little bit, and it's showing a decline, a moderate decline of about 10 students, about 2.65 percent. And finally, Valley View, which started with, which had 669 students in 2010-11, declined to about 603 in the current school year, a loss of about 66 kids, or 9.87 percent, and the projection at 2020-21 is 541, about 62 students, or about 10.28 percent. Now, what this projection does not include are the 100, 100, 100 new apartments, which are being developed in the, in the Lakeview area. The projection, based upon the type of apartment size of apartments, and when they're coming in, will show about 19, it'll, over, over a period of time, it, we can expect about 19 new elementary school students to come out of those 100 apartments. All of these students will be in the current attendance zone of Lakeview, and it comes out to about 2.1 students per, per grade level, or per class. So it won't necessarily increase the need for additional sections, but it could have the impact of increasing class size, again, if nothing changes. Okay? So then the next thing I wanted to do, or I did, was, was do the utilization study. In other words, what's the impact of enrollment on actual classroom utilization space? And the way I did this study was kind of threefold. The first is each, each principal was given a survey. Each principal was giving me a survey, so they could actually tell me how they use their buildings, how they use the classrooms, how they use it for regular instruction, how they use it for special needs, and for other services. I then took those, that, and I compared that to the actual building footprint, the floor plan of the building, and I did a calculation to see is there any difference between the actual space in the building and the way the principals are using it. And then the third and final was to actually go into the buildings, walk the buildings with the principals, and get an idea of what the buildings actually look like. So we'll go to the next table. So this is Lakeview utilization, and it's, don't stare at it because you'll go blind. I think that we can probably, this is some point on the district website, but what this is telling me, Lakeview currently is fully utilized. And if we, well, if we took away the, well, it's fully utilized, meaning every single classroom, every single space in that building is being used, including the trailers, which, which currently house music program, vocal music, and instrumental music. Now, if those were taken out of the trailers and brought into Lakeview building, what we would have is, in 2016-17, we would have absolutely every single space in the building used. The zero means that there'd be no, there are no open classrooms in that building. So every sing, with music coming back into the building, we're fully utilized, it can be done, but there's absolutely no flexibility beyond that. If you go out to the projected years, you'll see, again, that last line, that open line, that says that there, that over the next five years, we're not looking at any additional space if we shut down the trailers as far as instructional spaces for kids are concerned. You'll also take a look at, under current, under current levels, the average class size in, in Lakeview is 22, and that pretty well holds between 22 and 21 over the five-year period. So again, the class sizes, based upon the, the way the enrollment is going, will remain about 20, 21, or 22 in that area, might be slightly higher when, when and if the 19 children come into, come in based upon new apartments. Again, hard to know what grade levels they'll come in, but again, the class sizes will remain pretty much the same. We go on to the next slide, please? Okay, this is Riverview, Riverview utilization. Okay? But again, with Riverview, with Riverview, next year, again, if we, well, at this point, there were no children getting instruction in the, in the two, in the two learning cottages. What they're currently used for, one side is guidance, one side is child study team, and occasionally, children are brought in there for testing and things like that, but they're not really used as instructional spaces. So those, so we have, as of right now, we have zero room in that building. The building is fully utilized, the projection shows that it's gonna be fully utilized next year, but because of the slight decline in enrollment, we're looking at, we're looking at possible opening of one classroom in 2017-18, which means that that could be used for something like the child's, something like guidance, or, or music, or some, some such thing that is, if we close that, if you close down the trailers, there's space, and that one will exist throughout the period of the projections. The average class size in Riverview will be between 20 and 21. So the class sizes in the projection are pretty good. But again, it's important to keep in mind, there's very, very little flexibility in either of the elementary schools for movement of kids and additional programs and those kinds of things. Next slide, please? Okay. Okay, so question becomes, the question comes, I've been saying here, it's a presentation, that you're running out of space, that space is at a premium, that there's no, you know, that, that there's, going to the future, there's very little room and very little flexibility. So the question is, if our enrollment decreased by this larger percentage, if it's decreased by this number of kids, why is there no room? And it's kind of a common question, a lot of districts that have declining enrollment. Well, first of all, there was the implementation a couple of years back of full-day kindergarten. Remember, that ate up classroom in each building. So that was one, that was one reduction. The other thing, too, is that over the course of the last 15 or 20 years, there's been an increased demand for special services, including self-contained classrooms, resource rooms, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, ELL programs. It's not like the board has a choice in implementing these programs, these programs have to happen. And again, you could look at a broad number in decline and say, well, still, even with these programs, we've lost so many kids. Well, think about special needs. It's got CAP programs. An autistic program, for example, requires a full-size classroom, an 850-square-foot classroom, but can only have six children. So that is a big loss of space. When you're looking at regular class sizes of 21 and 22, you're taking away classrooms that can only accommodate six children. Self-contained will be, have a limit between 15 and, between 12 and 15 children, depending upon the handicap. Again, fewer kids in large space. You're required to have resource rooms. Resource rooms are for, I'm sure you're all familiar with them, but they're special needs programs that pull kids out of the regular instructional day, so that they need to have a space to go to for helping math, helping whatever, whatever the IEP says. But again, these rooms have, are full-size classrooms with limited number of students. In fact, there are a lot of these classrooms that are subdivided into two and three spaces, so that two or three instructional programs can go on at the same time. And there are other related services that go on in the building. So the schools have actually shrunk. You know, population has shrunk, but so have the schools, because the available space has shrunk in these school buildings. Next slide, please? Okay. So, after reviewing this and talking about, talking about, the, again, getting back to the trailers, because that was one of the main goals, okay? If, if at Riverview, the child study team and guidance, we have space that they could be moved to, they could be moved, I believe, to the trailers at Lakeview, and so the trailers at, or the learning cottage review would no longer be needed. In Lakeview, we were able to move, or, well, we're, we, according to the principals, according to the administrative committee that met on this, we can move, or you can move, the instrumental and vocal music inside the main building, which means that the trailers now become available. And I think that we talked about needing to keep them, doing some renovation there, to be used as office space, specifically for the child study team. And with the decline in enrollment in Valley View, there are, there are currently four learning cottages, the trailers at Valley View, but the enrollment's declined to a point where they no longer need to be used for instructional purposes, so they can, they can be shut down. And Steve can address this, the superintendent can address this a little bit more at the end of my presentation. And final slide? Okay. These solutions, well, at the very least, get any kids out of instructional space in learning cottages. That's what they'll do, okay? But I don't believe, and I think that in, in talking with the principals, that I don't believe that these solutions are sustainable over the long term. I think with the increase in, with the increase of programs, with the fact that you're squeezed as far as you possibly can go in terms of space in the district, and with very, very, very few options left to the district, this is the best, best solution in a very tight situation. So one of the things we did talk about was for the board, maybe, in looking towards the future, to consider maybe the final, the financial impact of increasing space, especially at Riverview Elementary School, could be accomplished. We talked a little bit about maybe adding a second floor to the Riverview Elementary School, again, if, from an engineering point of view, it's feasible. Again, from a financial point of view, it's feasible, and so that might be something the board might consider, because again, it looks to me that space is kind of at a premium in the district. So that's really the sum and sum of my presentation. I'll be more than happy to entertain questions. Steve, you wanna add anything to it?
Sure. Any of the board members have questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
You said that it doesn't include the 100 new apartments, which I assume are, Aston Lake you're talking about?
Yes.
Does it include any of the numbers going on in Portland?
Well, that's, that's the only, when I, I got my information, well, it doesn't include onesies and twosies, because they're, you know, like, a lot here, a lot there, because there aren't very many, as in, there are very few of those, and I did speak to planning and zoning on a couple of occasions about that. So the numbers that they gave me, these were the actual numbers that were, these were the numbers of things that are known and approved. Again, there may be some...
Because in previous demographic studies I've received in my time on the board, it lists out all the homes being built and everything like that, and I know, I drive past three buildings going on, and they look like apartments or multi-family homes.
Well, keep, also be careful, because what I've excluded from my study are anything that's age-restricted. So you may see buildings, but if they're age-restricted, because they don't generate children, so they're not included in my study. So this is kinda really based upon the best information that I have. And again, coming from planning and zoning.
Okay. But you don't show us what it's included.
I'm sorry?
But you didn't show us what it includes.
In the bottom, it says she's expecting 19 students.
Yeah, I said it includes that the 100 apartments can project about 19 students.
So it only includes, I guess, like, no other...
No.
No other major ones. And the building department, I spoke to the building department, this is the only major thing that's really in development right now.
Okay, but if four single-family homes go in, you could have...
Yeah, but, no, be, be real careful with that, because the way, in terms of four family homes, anecdotally, you could say, well, four family homes with five bedrooms each home will produce 20 kids. Doesn't work that way. The way it works, it, the way, the way it works is that every home produces a fractional number of kids. So for, I give an example, one I'm familiar with, I just did a study up in Ridgewood, and for every single-family home that is of median value of $500,000 or more, it produces .76 elementary school kids. Because when you project on the basis of new construction, okay, you base it, you've gotta base it not only on that house, on that house, but the universe of all houses. There's a very interesting, the data comes from Rutgers University, by the way, the Center for, I don't know, did I footnote, did I footnote it in the other? If you wanna understand how, really understand...
I shared that report.
Oh, you did? Okay. The, it comes from the Center for Urban Studies, that every few years does an update on how many children, elementary school, public school, private school, middle school, and high school, children can be projected from a single-family home. So four homes won't project a huge number of students, just like 100 apartments, especially given the size of these, one and two bedrooms. Based upon, based upon the size of the apartments, the square footage, will produce a fractional number. I don't think I have in that summary sheet, but I think I did in the larger sheet.
It's on the first page, right?
Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
Has there ever been like a 100, you know, apartment complex that was done up before, and has anybody seen what the actual number is? Not the fractional number.
I believe two of the apartments that went up on Route 10 is a board member.
What was, what was the projection then, and what actually came out of it? Because...
I, I think we got many more students than was projected. And that's why I asked, because in previous demographic reports, they literally list what builders are building, what homes, and, you know, projections are.
We keep, no, because they...
You've spoken across the whole town, I get it's fractional, right?
Yeah.
But when you're looking at one complex, 100 units that goes up, you know, if it's got, if 100 have gone up in another town, how many have they actually seen? By coming to the district that, that, from those...
Well, that's the study that's been done. In other words, what Rutgers does, it looks, it does, it looks at statewide, it looks at community, county, state, section, and it says, and it does all the comps. So it's saying this type of unit generally produces this number of students in this type of community. It takes into account value of home, it takes, you know, affordable housing, it takes into account size of apartments, it takes all those numbers into account. And it's also kind of, it can be, sometimes there are a development, which is mixed, mixed residential and commercial, okay, which may be a transit development, will produce a different number of students. So it's, it's not, look, it's not an exact science, but by the same token, if you look at all of the construction that's existed, the reality of any construction, let me, let me say this, okay? I looked for things that had permits, had approvals, had tentative approvals, and that's, so if they didn't, they weren't considered in the study. Also, I didn't cherry pick a single home, because it really, it's so marginal in terms of what it produces, but having said that, if you take a look at construction that's been done, new construction that's been done in Denville over the last five or six years, and you look at the enrollment projection, the reality is that it's been, it's, it's kinda been inverse. I mean, there may have been some construction, but enrollment has gone down. So that kind of, you know... So that kind of, you know, the proof of the pudding kind of isn't tasting.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One of the things you mentioned was that you think that music at Lakeview can get moved into Lakeview, but before that, you said there was no space. So how can we move into a space if we don't have space?
It's gonna have to be some juggling around. There's, there's some space that-
There is space.
There's a little bit of space. Like, in other words, there's, every room is being used, but we can move a group that's smaller, like, from a, from a large room into a smaller room. And we have another, we have some rooms set aside with those, they've been built to be split in half. I don't know if you've ever seen those, but there's some rooms in Lakeview that were built to be split in half, not like we added walls or something fake. When it was actually built, it has like a sliding wall. And, and right now, the walls are open, so we can, we can use both sides of that separately instead of, as a whole. So there's a couple of things like that we would have to do. And then we'd free open up, we'd open up some, a large room for music. We may have to use the all-purpose room, the stage for some things. Somehow or another, we will make that work. It's, it's not gonna be easy, it's gonna be a little juggling around, but it'll work.
Yeah. And I would, we also, we worked with the principals on that also.
Right.
Okay.
So one other question. So thank you, by the way, for the presentation, I appreciate it. Could you explain a little bit about, and I don't need to get detailed, but about the cohort survival method and six-year history? And the reason why I ask is, at the last demographics study was presented, they didn't have, you have a static birth rate of 153. They didn't use a static birth rate. They went back and looked at birth rates in Denville for the past five years, and they used that as, as a moving target. You use a, a static number for the next five years out, which may not obviously be representative. That's one question. The second question is, you said you used six-year history, but then if you look at the history of Riverview, and you look at what you future projected, they're drastically different. On the slide earlier.
Well, let me, let me-
Two percent versus 11 percent, so it was a big difference.
Okay, because again, it's the, can you go back, no, it, it doesn't help. Okay, first, let me, it, it doesn't help. The large reports should have all of the tables that, the actual tables that show you the, the actual projection tables themselves. All right. First, well, the first question was, okay, explain cohort survival and birth rate, okay?
Do you want to say this?
No, I'm okay. Okay, the, there are two ways the state accepts, okay, accepts kindergarten projection. Way one, way one is birth, is birth to kindergarten. And what that simply means is that you take the births in a certain year, and then you look at the differentiation between those births and kindergarten five years later. So kids born in 2005 become students in, okay. The real problem always that's been with that is, number one, the state's on a three or a four-year lag on birth rate. So right now, I've only got birth rates up to 2011. The second thing is that it's kind of an old methodology, in terms of the fact that it used to be, you came into a town, you were born into a town, you went to the schools, and you died in the town. And so birth rate was a very actual predictor. It's become less than a reliable predictor. So I do something, and I've gotten this approval from, from the State Education Department, I use a regression analysis, which is simply a moving average. Okay? And I found, if I, if I go back and I look at the relationship between the regression analysis and the actual kindergarten versus the birth rate, I find that the birth rate generates a way, way, way too low number. So I make a judgment, and the judgment here is that moving average works a lot better than, 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 than birth rate. So in this district, I don't use birth rate, I use, I don't use birth rate, I use moving average. So that's how it's done here. So birth rate is just informational, and the last three years of the birth rate there are average numbers, because those numbers don't exist yet, state doesn't have them yet. And as I said, the state will now accept that in its long-range facility plan. That's one. Now, cohort survival, okay? The way cohort survival works is, it follows groups of students as they move from grade to grade over a period of time. So for example, let's say in 2010, 11, there were 100 first graders. And when those 100 first graders became second, moved into the second grade, that number increased to 110. That creates a ratio of 1.1, or 10% growth. But you don't want to do that for one year. So we do that movement, first to second, first to second, first to second, for a period of five, of five, to get five migration ratios, which means you have to have six years of history. That then produces an average number. You take that average, and you apply it to the current grade level, okay? The current enrollment in that grade level. So let's say that you have, that in, in this current 2015, you had 100 kindergarten kids, again, just making up, 100 first graders, again, just making up numbers. But the average growth rate for that was 100, was 1.01, or 1.02, whatever. So when, so the projection for your first grade in the following year might be 102 kids or 103 kids. But as that goes down, it's, as that changes, because that number, that same percentage is acting on a higher number, the growth rate may get slower. Conversely, if you've got tremendous growth in any grade, it would have the opposite effect. So, so that's what happens. So the, so if you picture the table as going on a diagonal, first, second, third, fourth, second, third, fourth, fifth, okay? That's how you get, you get that average, you apply it to the current enrollment, and that projects out. Then to that, you add any significance in terms of, in terms of, of, of new housing, that, that kind of a thing. So here, the numbers projected by new housing are rather small, but if you go into a community like, let's say, Monroe Township, which is in Middlesex County, where they're, over the next five years, they're projecting 2,100 new single-family homes. That makes significant difference in terms of what that projection is gonna be. So I, I hope that explained it.
Yeah, I guess it does. Patrick, can you just go back a slide? I guess the question goes, go keep going, exactly the beginning.
Good one.
I think it was the first graph. This one, yes. Yep, one more, there you go. All right, so, so if you look at Riverview-
Right.
So, I guess the percentage change over the last six years has been negative 17.65%.
Right.
And then you're projecting out negative 2.65%, but then when you look at Lakeview, they're pretty close at negative 4.8, negative 4.6. Why the huge variance between Riverview's percentage change over the last six years and over the next six years?
Grade level breakage. The difference in terms of who's enrolling, it's in two different population sets. So has the population in Lakeview generally grown at a greater rate than the, I'm talking about the Lakeview attendance area, has that population grown, or declined at a lesser rate?
Bubbles.
Yeah, that kind of a thing. So, you know, so that's, that's really, that's really, it's, they're two distinct population areas, so they're going to react differently.
Okay.
It's not, you know, it's not, it's not the same calculation, you know, for example, you're, okay, well, your overall, your, the other thing that also get a little skewed here, and I had to pay attention to, was the fact that the first three years of the enrollment were based upon half-day kindergarten, the next couple of years were based upon full day. So I had to do some weighting, because they, because if you, you take a look at, you know, in one year, you had 28% increase from kindergarten to first grade, last year you had 12% increase. So that's, you know, that's, that's 16% differentiation. So, again, those are kind of little tricky things that happen. Okay. Other questions?
I just wanted to make a couple of classifications. The, where you, the one thing where we have the CST guidance moving from Riverview to Lakeview, that's not, that's not the CST guidance of Lakeview, it would be the district CST people moving to, to Lakeview into the trailer. We also, in Valley, in Valley View, we didn't really address Valley View. Right now, Valley View has four tra, four rooms and two trailers. Currently, three of them are being used for classrooms. What we would do is push those classes in here, and teachers will have to share rooms, go from a room to a room. So you might have, if you're a teacher teaching English, you might teach in room C12 one period, and you might have to go into C13 the next period. We, we looked at it, and we can keep people in the same vicinity, meaning they won't have to walk away from the sixth-grade wing all the way up to a classroom here. So that's how we can work that out. And we also are looking at modernizing this library, and one of the things would be to put, if we put in a, a computer lab in the library, that could free up the computer lab for a classroom. So these are just some things that we're thinking about to try to help. We have to do something, and for some reason, when you said something to me, Ross, it resonated, because I've been thinking about these, it's, they've been here for 12 years, they're meant for a two-to-five-year fix, and you said to me, Steve, right now you have no plan at all for these trailers, and five years it can go like that, and they're gonna be 17 years old. So that's, that really resonated with me, and at this particular time, we have to do something to either, to eliminate the trailers, and I also don't want to sink money into the trailers if they're gonna be demoed. So we're at a point where we need to make some decisions, and that's why I needed you to help me with this. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
It's not related to the, I mean, it's related to this, but not related to the demographic portion, is the trailers. So if we were to decide to get rid of the trailers, and five, 10 years from now, you needed extra space, correct me if I'm wrong, you cannot build trailers.
Most likely not, no.
The state will not allow you, so they will force you to add on to a building or do something larger.
They'll let you do it for a temporary, a temporary fix.
Is it temporary fix?
Yeah, and they, and it lasted a long, a lot longer than they wanted. The political climate changes, depending on who's in the, in the main seats, and whether or not they're gonna approve these things, or force you to make the permanent changes to the district. So there's, they say that they're only supposed to be there for five years, but obviously, we've had them here a lot longer than that. The, when the county did their, their walkthrough here, they're going to do, give me a written, a written statement, but they wanted us to have a plan for them to be gone in three years. So that started back in the fall. So we need to do something in the next couple of years. And when they mean gone, they mean gone for children use. They're okay with it to be used for offices, meeting space, and storage, but, but they don't want children in trailers.
Can you talk about how typical it is for middle school teachers to either have, like, a static home, or a static classroom, or to be moving around between classrooms? Is that, is there one word typical, or more typical, or less typical?
Well, this is my eighth school district, from a few years back, it's my 26th year, and now I can say that within the districts I've been in, it's very common for a middle school teacher to change rooms. You know, obviously, there's advantage to having one room, but I think those days are gone now, and I think if you have a choice, if you have a choice of keeping, you know, teachers in one room, or having kids in trailers, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with have teachers change rooms.
But currently, we have teachers changing rooms a day.
We do have some. This would be more.
It's not like we haven't looked at it and utilized.
Sure, we do have some teachers changing rooms, but we have a lot of teachers, you know, like, we have three teachers basically that are out there the whole day, and their kids come to them out there, so they would have to be pushed into the building. And I don't know if Dr. Collins has some, she has experience in middle schools too, and we've talked about this, that it wouldn't be uncommon, especially when there's a little bit of a, of a, of a space crunch.
Yeah, I mean, it's a common model. And I think that it's different from an elementary field into a middle school, that you typically share in a room.
There's, what, eight periods in the deck? In the middle school?
There's academic in.
And, but they don't teach eight periods, right?
Teach six.
Six, so there's, if they're in one classroom, there's two periods where there's not anything happening in that particular classroom?
There would be, there's three, because-
There's nine periods in a deck.
There's eight academic and a lunch, so it's not, nine regular days.
All right, so there's three.
Right.
All right.
All the years my kids were in these schools, when I was here on back-to-school nights, the teachers were removing just as much as they could, because I waited in classrooms for teachers to arrive to talk to them.
Do we typically try to keep the teachers, if it's a math teacher, they're gonna go to a math classroom?
Not historically in this building.
Because obviously, there's like, things on the walls, that are like, relevant to math, not like social studies on the wall.
I mean, we share the wall space, but I mean, you would try to use, you would try to use like, science and home ec and things like that, obviously, for those types of purposes, because they have labs in them. But for the most part, we would try to do that, as much as you could. Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, okay? And if there's anything else you need, just-
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ross.
Superintendent's comments? What do you got for us, Steve?
I just wanted to mention the, the hour of code, and I pretty much talked about it already, but I'm just happy to see that we're, we're taking advantage of the hour of code, and 166 million people worldwide doing it. We really tried to make a big deal out of it and promote it. We're tweeting out things all week and, and going and visiting. We had, we had some Skype visits with programmers all around the country, with our, with our staff, with our students. We had visits from, from the Mars Holes Regional Computer Science Kids. We hooked up with NJIT. We will be doing some more work with NJIT in the future in the winter. And we're, we're just trying to really make this thing, it's not just about the coding, it's about the thinking behind the coding, too, that's important. Just get everybody to understand what it is, and I think as the years go on, everybody will be a little bit more accepting of it, and, and try it, and feel good about it. So we're gonna keep driving this coding thing in the future. That's it for me.
That's it. Sandy, what do you got for us?
The much-anticipated park scores are in, so you can expect them to be mailed on Wednesday, so a few days after that, you should receive them. Every parent, including our ninth graders now, should receive it in the mail. So look for it in the mail, and if you don't receive it before break for sure, call the school and let us know that. I also like to thank all of the, the parents that came out for the pass meeting to discuss the park. It was a great meeting, really, some positive discussion about how we're moving forward, and, and really how our students are doing. The next pass meeting is on January 6th, and it's a variety of workshops or breakout sessions on ways to help struggling learners. So we have a presentation on dyslexia, we have it on specifically students that are struggling in math and in language arts, talk a little bit about our basic skills programs, and even if they're just struggling in general ed classes, some varieties of strategies for parents to use. So that'll be January 6th, and it's a joint venture between our district CPAC, as well as our parent academy. So that will be on January 6th. This concludes the student superintendent's report.
Thank you for saying that. It's very nice of you. Demarys, what do you have for us?
I have no reports.
No reports for you? All right, it is 8:18. If we could, open up to public comments that are referencing the agenda, name and address for the record.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, once again. Vito Bianco, Nine Beach Place, Denville, and I'm here on behalf of the Denville Historical Society. We have some of our members here tonight as well. Very brief tonight, I know that how Mr. Cass would like me to do a much, much more in detail talk tonight, but we are very happy that the, that the schoolhouse is once again available for sale to the township. We were at the township meeting last week, and the township appropriated money to buy, as most, I think most of you were there, township appropriated the money to purchase the schoolhouse, and just here to say the Historical Society is 100% behind the sale to the township, so that we can restore the building. Okay? Thank you.
The only thing I would want to correct is that the schoolhouse is always available[1667.15] The only thing I would want to correct is that the schoolhouse is always available to the town for purchase, for sale.
I'm sorry?
Just that the schoolhouse is always available for sale to the town. Any other comments? Now's your chance. Two-tier blessing, are we talking about two-tier blessings?
Sure.
My name's Lynn Weldon, I live at 42 Lenape Trail. I wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I felt that it was important, because I did want to share, I have, um, first grader and fourth grader at Lakeview, and I have a sixth grader here at Valley View, and my two older children have found, um, sports that they really enjoy, and I have a concern about the, um, change in the, proposed change in the school day, and how it affects that. Um, my two older ones, their, um, sport of choice has them participating three nights a week, and currently, on days when my sixth grader has a lot of homework, and it coincides with the night of practice, it becomes very visibly stressful for her, and she wants to give attention to her schoolwork, because she knows that that's the most important, more important than her sporting activity, um, but she has time and energy and effort invested in her sports as well, and so it really produces a, a very stressful, um, time for her, and I worry that if this goes through, that that occasional stress will become a more routine anxiety for her of, what am I going to do, what do I, where do my, my, my efforts lie, because their time in the afternoon is gonna get crunched, because they're coming home later than they do right now. And I, I would just ask you not to make this decision, I know that the board's main focus is the education of the students of Denville, which I think we're all, obviously, in favor of, but not to make that decision in a vacuum, that there are other ripples that can happen because of this decision, and that that is one of those things, and it's not just sports, it's CCD, and scouts, and dance, and enrichment, and all of those things, and I think that we want smart kids in Denville, but we also want well-rounded kids, and lastly, I just have to say that on those nights, that my child has her sport, and coincidentally, it's swimming, just like Michael does, she sleeps like a log. She gets her nine, 10 hours before her head hits the pillow, she's exhausted, she gets a good night's sleep, because she is active in that activity. So I just ask you to keep those things in mind, and how that impacts the kids, and, and their stress level, in you trying to help them in their schooling, in their day at school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like a bad Adele song. Hello, it's me again, I mean, my name is Judy Ingram, I'm at One Boroughs Lane, and I'm sure you all know that there's a petition out there with regards to these time changes, and we have about 225 signatures to date on that, um, petition, and that petition basically is, and I just want to state this, it doesn't, I'm, I think the alignment of the two elementary schools is phenomenal, I think the two-tiering of the bus is a phenomenal idea, um, living in Denville for now 19 years, there's always been that, you know, Lakeview versus Riverview, and I think that would be a wonderful alignment, with the teachers getting together and everything else like that, but again, going back, people are really concerned with the time change, and the proposal that was there was, you know, to go with option B, but really, the proposal that people were looking at was a 7:45 start, and an 8:15 or an 8:20 start for the elementary schools. You know, kind of working with the district, I mean, I don't know how much more I can say, I'm all about education, and we just went through a tremendous change to add 20 minutes of instructional time and 11 minutes, and that's a wonderful thing, and it is great. But, again, to Lynn's point, it's, it's really detrimental to a lot of children, and what comes down the pike, and I did do some studying, because I am a very factual person, and I did look at all those great studies that Sandy has brought up, and yes, there are some eighth grade, I'm not gonna say, but majority, 80%, relate to high school, which we have no control over. So, with that being said, um, I really think that this issue needs to be publicized, it needs to be put on the Friday folder, so people really understand the impact that it's going to have, not in a vacuum, okay? We talked about a survey, haven't seen that yet, it's gotta come out, we can't work in a vacuum and not have people understand how this is going to impact them. And for me, I got two years and I'm out, but people really, I really feel bad for the kids, and people who have elementary school students, who really don't know how this school is going to change their life. And, you know, a lot of you have children who have gone through this school, and understand the impact of the homework, the impact of the camaraderie of bringing the two schools together, the sports, and not that I want to bring this up, because it's, it's certainly not about my child, it's about all the children at Denville, and it's always been my motto, it's all about the kids. But the other day, the basketball team, which my son is on, pulled into this parking lot with no exaggeration, at 5:55, from Del Barton. So if the school day is extended, that hour, they would be pulling in a whole hour later. And in speaking to some of the coaches, which, Dave, I think you had said, I spoke to some of the coaches, and my kid doesn't even play football, none of my kids did, and they said that's the most absurd thing they've ever heard about backing the sports up, because the kids get home at 8:30 to begin with, and they would not be for that, for the kids to be getting home at 9:30. So, but that being said, you know, I don't know what has been, you know, but there's, there's a lot of factors that really need to be included, and, you know, when people become aware of what's happening, they're really against this situation. And, in honesty, I mean, I think I've got like, two comments that, yeah, I think it would be great, but they also have elementary school, but the rest have all been against the dramatic remove. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
So, just to make sure, you know, everybody's on the same page here, this was brought out as a discussion, that's why it was on the Friday folder, explaining that we're gonna talk about some of these issues in a public meeting, give the people a chance to talk, and I also told everybody publicly, the board and the public, that no decisions will be made on this, a drastic change like that would not be made without a series of informational sessions, getting to your vacuum idea, that I, I said I would run at least three different informational sessions, at different times, if we were gonna make a drastic change like that. So, we heard you, we heard the people, and, and you make valid, some valid arguments, I'm not gonna deny that. I think that, I think that moving the start time later for middle school kids to sleep later is great in a vacuum, but I do think there are other things that are, that do affect that, and, and that's why exactly we wanted to hear from the public, we weren't making these decisions, as a matter of fact, I don't even have the power to make these decisions without the seven people here, because they have to vote on the bus schedule, and I know that this is not a busing thing, it's a sleeping thing, and it's kid thing, but I can't do the other thing without the busing, so there would be a way to stop it, you know, if, even, meaning, I just don't want anybody to think that you're gonna wake up one day, and I already made the decision, it's over, it's not that, it's not gonna happen. Um, we are actually strongly considering what you just said, as a matter of fact, of a, and I'll back up a little bit. This year with the extended school time, the only way we could make it work with our three-tier, was to start Valley View even earlier, which we said, we're gonna have to do it for one year, but we have to go back, because it was already too early, and now we're starting it another 11 minutes early. So, the, the exact plan that you mentioned was something that was like our Plan C, that we didn't want to bring out yet, because that was something that we don't really need to have long informational sessions about, because it's not a very big impact, it's gonna, it would be something like pushing the middle school schedule back to where it was approximately, 7:45-ish, if we could make it that, do the two-tier, get the kids, get, get both schools on the same schedule, if we can do it, transportation-wise, and then start the elementary schools at 8:20. What, what that would mean to the public would mean, 15 minutes earlier for Lake, for Valley View, 15 minutes later, sorry, 15 minutes earlier for Riverview, 15 minutes later for Lakeview, it's kind of like a, a good mix, right in the middle, the kids would, the kid, all the teachers would be able to meet, like we said, there's, there's a lot of other positives to it. So, I don't, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, and, and our reporters in the room, make sure you get this, this will not be decided by Steve Forte in a vacuum. It will be something that's approved by this board, and I will do at least a minimum of three information sessions, if we are going to still consider the drastic one. I don't think I'm gonna go on a road tour like that, if we're gonna do a 10, 15-minute change, but if we are gonna do the drastic one, there will be, you know, I'll go on tour and explain it, and people can even, you know, have other meetings if you want, I'd be happy to come talk to them if we want, if we go that way.
Can I just ask you, like, when is that gonna be decided, like, if you're going on for a tour?
It's still within the next few weeks, next couple of meetings at the latest, I mean, we have to start thinking about those things now, and, right, but to Steve's point, and I think what we've always talked about from the get-go, was the point of having the last meeting and having people come out, was that we don't want to throw this out on anybody, and at the very least, positive or negative, have people come out and say whatever they want to say. The idea of not having input from the public, or the continued input from Facebook, or the surveys, or whatever it is, is not the way that anyone decided that they wanted to go. You may totally disagree with us, and that's fine, but, but the point is that we want to hear you, and we represent you at the end of the day.
And one of the reasons why I got...
No, and I don't mean it negatively, I mean, it's okay, it's okay.
I'm just saying, if that's, if you're gonna go, that's wonderful, but it has to be put out there as to why.
Yep, right. One of the things, too, one of the reasons why we were pushing this issue a little bit faster than you may expect, like, talking about next year, is because I wasn't sure if there were gonna be budgetary concerns, meaning, like, this is gonna cost more money, and we need to be able to bring that to the board and decide, because we want to go to this, we're gonna need to buy a bus, or I'm gonna need to hire a bus driver, but after doing our, our preliminary research at this point, we don't see it as a, as a budgetary issue, driving the budget up. If anything, there may be a little bit of savings, not a huge amount, but there may be some savings. Okay? Just make sure we all got that. Alright, go ahead.
In addition with the clarification, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, in my presentation, what I was asked to present to the board is all of the impacts, the beneficial impacts on students, whether it was their health, their education, I mean, that's my role as the assistant superintendent of curriculum and instructions, to look at the impact on students, and that is what I presented at our last meeting, so that people can really get a balance, um, you know, say, like, look at my impact on activities, or my home life, and my schedule at home, but about, be able to have the research behind it, to say, balance that, well, what would be the positives? And that really was what we were trying to present, was, here's one impact, and we're aware of the concerns, and, you know, scheduling, and we have to balance that, no decision, again. We, I did not come in, neither to the board, with any decision being made, we just want to make sure we could put, at the initial meeting, put all of the facts out there, so people can start to look at, um, the decision-making process.
Thanks, Andy.
And we'll briefly talk about this later, when it's transportation on the agenda, because we did talk about it in committee since we met with the public.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, Stacy Hogan, 24 Cedar Lake East, Denville. So I just, I sat for the last meeting after a lot of people had left, and I think the board went around and made some comments, and then I didn't want to get back up again, because I wanted time to digest it, but a lot of the people on the board, so this is really more directed at the board, not Dr. Collins or, um, Mr. Forte, but a lot of people were like, well, yeah, it would inconvenience me, too, and my takeaway for that was, you know, if I gotta drive up to Lakeview, it's an inconvenience for basketball practice once a week, that inconveniences me at night, but every day, all school year, to be inconvenienced morning, afternoon, and night, that's way more than an inconvenience. And if, if, if I have to get up anyway, as over 200 people sound like they do, at least, that we've spoken to, that means all these kids have to get up anyway. So the whole benefit of the sleeping later does not happen. And I think you had mentioned something about, well, we have morning care, maybe there's exercise, exercise is good, and I felt like exercise in the morning, we get exercise in the afternoon, I don't want exercise in the morning, I need to get my kids to school in the morning, so I can go to work, so I can pay for the school system here, and that's a lot of working parents. And I do feel that having to put my kids in morning care now almost punishes them for the parents who do have to go to work. It's not right, and it's not fair, and I read those studies, and at least 80% of them were high school. We don't have high school students here, and the ones that are in middle school, were where the middle school and the high school were combined, and they did the study, 6 through 12. So unless we have studies, that say, 6 through 8, here are the benefits, 6 through 8, okay, that's interesting, then what's our metric? We don't have a metric. We looked at the bus thing last time, and half the hazard streets weren't on it, there's, I felt like that whole meeting exposed so much, and then when everybody went around the room, everyone said, well, I think we should move forward at now. I'm like, huh, it just felt like, I didn't feel like anyone was really hearing it, so I just, except for Don Cass, I felt like he really got it. So, I just, I just want to repeat it again, because I know that you're all volunteers, and it's, it's a very difficult job, I work in education, and I get it, but I just, I just want to make sure that it's being heard, because when I look, there are so many people that are not here, that I keep seeing that, because they don't think it will happen, I guess, is what it is, until it happens, but I think it will happen. And part of the reason I think it will happen, is because when we did that presentation, we only showed what would happen if we did it, we never researched what would happen badly if we did it, we only talked about, here's the buses, here's the time changes, and we didn't say, well, X amount of families will be inconvenienced, we are gonna have to open morning care all over the place, it's going to cost parents X amount of dollars now, morning and afternoon, because of something like this, and if I'm not happy, my kids are not happy. You know, so, there, it's just a much bigger thing than an inconvenience, and I just, I just wanted to say that, um, very respectfully to all of you, because I do appreciate your volunteer time here, and that's really all I wanted to say.
You're more than happy, you can yell at us anytime you like, Stacy.
No, that's not a yell, that was like, so not a yell, right? I really was not yelling.
You lost your voice.
Can I clarify one, one, one statement? We didn't just sit up here and say, yeah, go ahead and vote, we said, continue investigating.
Yeah.
We didn't say, yes, we're gonna do it.
No, I know you didn't vote or anything.
And that's what we wanted.
No, I know, I know.
Just wanna make sure. Didn't, didn't, because to me, that's an important distinction.
Yeah, I just, I just hope that the board heard, because I think, I felt like there were so many things exposed in that meeting, the busing alone, we had a bus driver get up and say, mega stops are a nightmare, think about that, think about a five-year-old getting off at a mega stop. It's dangerous, it's, I've seen these bus stops, and they're not mega stops, the bus stop I'm at, I can't even park there, I have to circle till the bus comes, I can't even imagine a mega stop in Cedar Lake, and Cedar Lake is not on the hazard list, along with probably 100 other stops that should be. I just don't feel like we even have all of the data to make that kind of a decision, like, really make it, and we don't have the research that backs it. To me, we don't, we have 6 to 12, we don't have 6 to 8, and I read in the studies, that kids got on average 19 more minutes of sleep. That was in the American Academy of Pediatrics. 19 minutes, in the end, because they're going to bed later, because they have their home, you know, it's all a push forward, I get it, with their clocks, I had a clock then, too.
So, adolescence, obviously, I guess it comes on at different ages for each kid, but I think, I think, I think you're looking at is, from the research that I read, and what we talked about, I guess the, the, the hot time would be really 7th or 8th grade to 10th or 11th grade, that's like the prime time that they're talking about. But then we also read a study about this, this would even help, and I don't know, look, there's studies for everything, I get that.
Of course there are, right.
And that's why we're putting this out, so that we can have these conversations. But we did, we even saw one where it said that even young teachers would benefit from this, because they're still adjusting, and their clock is adjusting. I do want to make a very important statement here, though, it's important, because I, I really never brought this up yet, there actually is a law right now, in New Jersey, that is gonna be, gonna go forward to study this, not to do it yet, but to study the state requiring that middle schools and high school don't start until after 8:30. So it's not like there, there's a law saying you have to start at 8:30, but there's a law to study this.
Yeah.
So, that could come down the road, now, that's probably 10 years away, if that even happens, so I just don't want this to just, you know, we're putting it out there, we want to hear from you, we could actually be forced to do this someday, you know, 10 years from now, whoever is sitting up in these chairs might have these same conversations with some of you, or whoever else is here, talking about the fact that now we actually have to do it. So, I don't know, we don't know where it's...
But if everybody did it, it would change some of the extracurricular things. So my son wrestled today, that wrestling match in this building didn't end until 6 o'clock, I mean, he got home 6:30, now he's showering, and now he's eating, and now, you know, he's probably still doing his homework, and he was here since school ended, so I can't even imagine him getting home at 7:30, after he hadn't been home all day. It, it just pushes everything forward for everyone, in the whole family, so, okay, thank you.
I don't think that anybody, last time we were here, said anything that I thought I necessarily disagreed with, at all. I mean, and, and quite frankly, it affects all of us, uh, you know, for us who have kids and things like that, so it certainly isn't in a vacuum, it isn't something that we take lightly, the point was that we want to get this information, and understand, you know, we could have had a totally drastically different, uh, public come up and say, I want my kid to sleep a half hour later, and that, I don't know where that would have went, but the point was to have the conversation, like Steve said.
I was gonna say, as the chair of clarification, I'm very happy to take all the heat for this, because when we discussed it in committee, we did come to the public before it was fully formed, so that everybody's voice could be heard, listened to, and brought into the conversation, so, yes, you can say to us, we don't have all the research in place, but the whole point was to come to you before we had it tied up in a bow. We were as open as we could be, when we were talking about it in committee, I asked, it was put in the Friday folder, we invited you all in, we listened to you all, we discussed it again after we heard from you, so, I mean, you can be upset with us for not having all the answers, or listening, and whatever, but that was something that I asked of us, we did it, I'm happy we did it. I don't, I even said that night, I was happy for the substitute bus driver that spoke, but you can ask the people in committee, I think I brought up everything he said in committee, we've been discussing and looking at this from every angle we can think of, but more minds give you more angles, and I'm always happy for that.
Do you have a... Thanks, Stacy.
Good evening, I'm Charles Body from 73 Mount Plus in Turnpike, I'm very happy to see your resolution number five on the agenda tonight, where you're going to be, uh, selling the, uh, old board office, also the number three school of Denville, to the township of Denville. I think it's a historic building that deserves to be saved, and I look forward to the historic society and the township of Denville recreating this and making it a real historic site, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, uh, comments from the public? Alright, it is 8:41. I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but tonight is Carlos's last meeting, and in honor, I'd like you to move the, uh... You've earned it, Carlos. like you to move the, you've earned it, Carlos.
I was gonna do the other one there. So good. On the, on the old business?
Keep it together. I just hear their voice cracking, keep it together.
Tears of joy. So on the old business, I'd like to move as a block item A, B, and C.
I'll second it.
Second for Mariana. Any questions on these?
I have one question. I have, in my minutes, Mr. Duarte, that you voted no on the milk checks last month.
I understand.
So if, when we move the minutes for November 23rd, if we could change the ministry, but Mr. Duarte didn't have stain on the milk check, would you vote no?
Do you accept that change, Carlos?
I do, too.
All right, excellent. Excellent. Good work. So, the November 23rd minutes should, show a vote of no for the tireless work of the government against our milk program.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. Thank you. Dino, you want to take us through personnel?
Yes, under new business personnel, I would like to move items 1, 3, 4 as block.
Second for that?
Second.
All right, any questions?
Yep.
Who do you got?
I'll send an email on this. Number two, student residencies. It's JAC, the Tola.
Yep.
Second from the bottom.
It's an I, not an O at the end.
I, I double-checked, I called her, I called her mother. I'm trying, you know, just to make sure you didn't have a G I H O, the Tola. And although, I'll let you run on the class script, that comes later. We'll listen to the one on the, G I H E O.
All right, so to include the changes to spelling, Dino, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Mike, you good with that?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yeah. Uh, Mike, you want to take us through instruction program, also known as curriculum?
Sure, if there are no objections, I'd like to move items 1 through 3 as a block.
A second. Barb, I don't know where it comes with a second. Any questions on this part?
Yeah, on the attached field business, there is listed a river view field trip to St. Francis for December 18th. I just got a notice today saying that that trip's in town.
Do we want to pull that off, or does it hurt to leave it on?
No, you can, you can always approve it, and you don't have to go. As a matter of fact, according to our policies, you don't even have to approve in-state or single-day trips, but we do it.
Any questions about these areas? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. So being our resident policy hawk, Carlos, you want to take us through policy? I know how much you like, I know you really like policy and, and everything else like that.
So, under C, how many revisions for regulation 4160 is going to be made?
I'll second it, since it went through my committee.
Second, moved by Carlos. Any questions about this one? I think we talked about it the last meeting, right?
We've spoken about it several times, we're just adding, it's going to stay the same as if we're adding a clause about bus drivers getting a physical every year, and the district pays up, picks up the tab.
And they don't have a choice, right? They have to do that. I know we talked about that.
No, by, by state statute, it's every other year, but we like to do it every year.
Got it. All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. Barb, you want to take us through finance?
Yeah, I feel like we should do it as a block, just to keep my head on straight.
There, there is an order to it, then. It's okay, you do, you would have to do four before five.
You want to move one through four?
I think we just start with the house. Number four, I'd like to move that we rescind the acceptance offer from Mr. Breen as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Done. Any questions about that at all?
Just a quick statement that I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with this entire process, and it's going to go to the township, and the, and the Historic Society is going to be involved, so I'm very happy to, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. Any, Barb?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to vote on number five on the agenda, which is the, to adopt the resolution that the town introduced last Tuesday for same purchase price of Mr. Breen for $160. The closing date cannot be set until the public hearing and vetting process is complete. It'll be sometime next year. But I'd like to move it as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mike, any questions about this part?
I just want to add, what, to reiterate what Mike said, as a board member, I'm very happy with moving this property for sale. As a taxpayer in Denville, I'm just hopeful that you guys can make what you wanted today and what you guys proceed today, and hopefully you guys have the resources to make that up.
Any other comments?
I'd like to add, to help the guys who, four to be exact, you know who you are, you know, without your tenacity, you know, I think how many budgets we had, it's been four or five years in the making, so I appreciate, it's because of your steadfast commitment that, you know, we were able to come to some agreement. Be applauded for your conscientious endeavors. But I feel like this is just chapter one, now, now the real work gets going. So all, all the people that have come to support you, you're gonna get, get them in writing, get them to help. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the remaining items, numbers one, two, three, and six as a block.
I'll second.
Second from Donald. Questions on the rest of these? Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
I'm gonna abstain on all of them.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes, on everything, but check one more.
How are you voting on that?
No.
Mrs. DiLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. So Carlos stands for his convictions on last meeting. No taken for paper. Uh, all right, thanks. Don, B and G.
I would like to move that the board approved the contract with DeCara Rubino to begin the design things of the Town Hall Board Education Office, for a cost of $4,800.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Questions about this at all?
Can we go over what it's for?
Sure. This is for the, the design and construction cross-estimate phase of the, of the plan to move the board office from our rented space at 400, 400 Morris Avenue to the upstairs section, the second floor section of the left side, if you walk up, half of that would be for seven of our 10 district employees, district-level employees. Three of, the other three would be moved to the trailer at Lakeview, like we discussed before.
So we're looking at, when you come up the stairs, the left-hand side taking over a portion of that?
Half the side, yep. And the square footage is about 600 square feet less than we have currently, but we'll be moving three less people over, so it's pretty close to equal, considering the amount of people we have moving over.
Not to be lost is this idea of finding some sort of a permanent home for the Board of Ed.
Right.
And preferably within the town, so we can share some services.
Yeah, this is, so I had the opportunity, I asked Mr. Forte to kind of bring me up and show, and Dino and I also went up and looked at the space, and I appreciate you taking time to do that. I think that this is another situation, in my opinion, where it's a win-win for the taxpayers, it's a win for the board, because we look at the break-even point on what we're paying for rent right now, and when you end up, you know, taking the construction cost into account, the break-even point is pretty, pretty quickly. So it's, it's a good long-term, or at least middle-term situation. It, it may not be perfect, the space, but I think it's a, it's a good compromise, and I appreciate the town working with us on coming up with, and Mr. Forte working with the town, on coming up with a, a proposal that would allow us to move in at, at, you know, not a significant cost to the district. I think that, you know, if there's empty space in a building that the town owns, we should really look at it. So I'm, I look forward to looking at this proposal and hopefully moving forward with the, with the idea.
Well, we've done this before, so let's wait and see what the plans are, because we've paid this money to architects before to give us plans and then didn't move forward, so.
Yeah, and on that note, I am going to vote no, just because I feel there needs to be a little separation between the two bodies. And there's intangibles that you can't measure with a dollar, and I feel it's not as good as what they have now. And so this, but if the will of the board is to proceed, I'm, I'm all for that, but my personal vote is no. We've already kind of done one round of it, and the results were not favorable to the district.
I mean, to pick up on that, I mean, a three-year payback, which I think we're looking at, I mean, in business, I would take that all day long, it'd be nice and easy, and it'd be done. I do share Mrs. DiLuna's thoughts a little bit. I'm a little concerned about kind of the perception of it being intangible. I think the public perceives the Board of Ed and the town as kind of one big entity. They don't necessarily see the distinction, so I'm a little bit concerned about it being under the center. The payback, though, is significant and quick.
How do we know it's a three-year payback before we get the plans and we have cost estimates?
Well, we have some pretty good ideas.
Just going by, just going by rough estimates from our, from our architect who walked around and there.
Okay. Because, I mean, they gave us estimates before, and it was not a three-year payback.
On the other side, there was changes to the.
Well, we looked at both sides.
There was a lot.
People didn't want to do away with the size of their current offices, and.
There was a different amount of people that moved in, too.
The previous administration had wanted that.
Okay, I'm, I was just curious, how we already knew it was a three-year payback when, the last time it was 20-plus years.
You know what, not only that, if you look, if you look at that construction estimate I gave you from the, one that you guys did a few years ago, if you notice that the square footage is double the square footage of what we're getting, meaning, they were charging like a $60 a square foot fee for the reconfiguration for the whole area, meaning that we were going to be paying to reconfigure the other side. So that, those conditions no longer stand. So I think it's, I think it's a good, I mean, to share with the public, too, we, I had, I asked Damaris to do a, a projection of the rent that we're going to be spending on this space, and we, we've already been renting for five years, we have, 10 years can go by pretty quick, so if you, if you take 15 years, it was, it was in the $880,000 range, whereas if we have to invest $150,000 to do some of these changes, and I know that sounds like a lot to the public, but when you add in all the fire things and the handicap things you have to do, $150,000 goes pretty quick. If it's in the $150,000 to $170,000 range, and we can pay this back in, in a, in a two, in a two, I mean, in a three-year payback, three and a half years maybe, and, and sign a 30-year lease for it, I think it would be, you know, a pretty good move for the town. Plus, I mean, I'm tired of driving all the way out to, to Morris Avenue, it's like a mile and a half from my house, now it'll be like a block.
The, but I think, I think it's important to say also that.
Exactly. Green sustainability.
You're committing walking to work.
I will. It's green sustainability.
We've got those bike racks out front, too, right?
It's important to talk about the idea that we're spending about $50,000 of the taxpayer dollar to use space, or to rent space, when our tax dollars already go to space that we built a few years ago.
No, it'd be fantastic if we can get it for $150,000. We can't even get a bathroom done for that.
No, that's fair, but I'm saying if it was even $200,000, even if it were $300,000. A 30-year lease.
I know, I'm just saying, there's no project I've undertaken in my 11 years on the board that was $150,000. So it would be fantastic if we could bring this project.
Just to clarify, our bathrooms were $80,000 each, not, not $150,000.
But, I mean, this, I think this vote is, on this one, is somewhat symbolic in a, in a different sense, too, because I feel like, you know, one of the things that we wanted to try to commit to was this idea of, you know, finding this permanent home, although this doesn't say necessarily that we're moving to Town Hall, I think that this is taking a step towards going in that direction. That, you know, unless, in my view at least, unless something ludicrous happens with the estimates, or, you know, something falls through with the town, or whatever the case is, you know, we're on that path now. And that, to me, is exciting. I know Carlos and I sort of touched on it the other day. It's, it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about it for years, and to have a permanent home is exactly what we should be doing. So, somewhat symbolic, but at the very least, it's a.
Mr. Body has a question. Do you want to wait till the end or do you want?
We have, some things are being moved to electronic, right?
Right now, we actually pay another fee to rent an office, an 880 square foot office, I mean, a storage space in the basement of the building to store our records because we need to save them for 100 years. So we are going to, so that's $10,000 a year. So we're going to invest some money this summer, probably in the range of about 10,000, between 10 and 15,000, to scan and purge these files, so that later the cost will go from a $10,000 a year for a, for a room to $2,000 a year, which is the hosting cost for the documents in the cloud. So we are working on that. As a matter of fact, both things have to go together, because the Town Hall doesn't have the space for that type of file storage, so we would either, if, if, right now, we have 18 months, basically. As of Ju-, as of January 1st, we have 18 months to have this thing going. So we do need to, we're not under the gun, but we need to start a little bit. So we're going to start with the purging project this summer, and then we have to do both of these things together so that we have room. If not, we will have to find some kind of, and the, the things that we're storing need to be in climate-controlled areas, because you can't leave these sensitive documents, you know, in, in musty conditions and things. So we're working all this together, kind of a lot of moving parts.
Are there any parts, you know, that's 90 years old?
Like whether or not we have to keep it?
Whether or not we have to keep it, or can we turn it over to the Storage Society? If that person intended that.
Now, it's 100 years you have to save. I guess after 100 years, you could probably do something to it, but you're supposed to destroy it.
We are in the process of obtaining the permission from the state in order to destroy this file to keep it archived.
Any other questions about this? Don moved.
You're moving three people to the trailer, but I thought you were getting rid of the trailer.
The ones at Lakeview, when we were talking about it, we were, we'd like to keep the ones at Lakeview for staff only, and we're still waiting on some of this. There's, there's an engineer that just went out there, he's going to give him a report. His preliminary report was structurally, they're okay, so they will need some paint and carpet and maybe a little reconfiguring inside, and then they'll, they should hold for a while.
For, not for students though. We shouldn't have students in there.
We can rent space back at 501 if we need it.
I was going to say. Can I just make one comment?
One comment, go ahead.
One of the biggest values I see is that the Board of Education is going to be right next to Chief of Police. You'll have the Police Department right next to you. Can you see the value and how important that would be, that, you know, the Police Department is right there for any concerns that you have, or any information that they walk over and see each other? I think that that's a great thing. And they're completely separate from Town Hall. I mean, you can't get into the Police Department unless you have a pass, and it's, again, the same thing, I'm sure, for the Board of Education. Nobody can just walk in and out of your, your office, if you own this office, you're responsible for that. And if things move forward, it's only a dollar a year. You can start renting it tomorrow if you want. It's only going to cost you a dollar. You can slowly move in, you can take your time, you can take your time configuring it, but I, I see the value in it. And one thing I brought up with Steve, Steve Ward, I said, one important thing is, again, I know that you have to have special areas, special consolidated areas, there are ways to build offices inexpensive, inexpensive. Now, that is a handicap accessible building, so, you know, obviously the doors have to be made handicap, but it is accessible. There's already, everything is already there in place, ready to go. I don't see, I mean, you're talking about reorganizing an office, and I had said, they should really be getting a interior designer, an office furniture designer, because they would do it for free. They would say, this is how you optimize this space, and I really think that that's something you should think about. Architects are, you know, obviously you have to bring an architect in. If they say, look, you have to put a wall here, you have to do this, you have to change the door, you have to get the architect, an interior designer, office design, and that's how we do it in the business world. They come in and for free, they say, this is how we'll do it, and this is the furniture that you need. And then obviously you get all the furniture from Town Hall too. And there's got to be a way to use the phone system. And we talked about, obviously, the computer system, you have your own computer system, but you can still use the internet. You know, there's, there's definitely ways, a lot of shared services. And when there's a snowstorm now, you guys can all go to work, because you know that the town is plowed, the town is.
Yeah, that's not a sell for a lot of people.
Well, I know it's future, and we want to go to work.
You hit the nail on the head when you talked about shared services. We've been talking about it for years, this idea that, you know, there shouldn't be, I mean, obviously there needs to be a distinct difference between the two entities, but at the same time, it's the same dollar coming from the same person, and we can't be flipping about it.
Well, we had this discussion, I don't know if the mayor brought it to your attention, but we're going to rent the building to somebody, it's going to go to a nonprofit organization, we're going to do something, because it is, it's unfortunate that that building, a 30,000 square foot building, when it was built, had 31 people in it. So it's 1,000 square foot per person, and it's obviously, we're assuming even though there's other ones, but it's changed. I think we're down to about 22 or 23 now. I believe, you know, the Engineering Department has moved over. I mean, it's just, it would be great if it did, and please have a wonderful one.
No, I think we're moving in that direction. Sure. Mr. Spence.
Steve, you indicated that, that you can completely purge and do a way of the hard copy. You don't have to keep all the copies of it.
Only if, only if it's certified by the state. The state, the state has to certify Damaris first. Damaris.
They have to approve it first.
Right.
We are in the process of working with another company. The company needs to supply all the information, how, we're going to archive it, what kind of mechanism we're going to be using. Once they approve that, and we'll get, get it okay, then we can archive all those records. And we can, we don't have to keep any physical form of records.
Carlos, I know the compliance in this industry, you're required to keep a hard copy of, of, of all documents.
Not when it's approved by the state.
It's actually, so correct me if I'm wrong, Damaris, but my understanding is it's like searchable, it's actually better. Right now, like to find it, it's like, hey, here's 500 boxes, go through these. They could just type in the search and boom, here comes what's up. So it's, and it does, it has to be certified by the state. We've, and Damaris and Mr. Forte have kind of gone through the whole process of making sure that it's appropriate, and the state approves it and all that, so it's a, it's a longer process than just, you know, me sitting with my scanner.
Is there a percentage that we do have to?
No, you can archive everything.
Or everything, not keep any hard copy.
They consider it, they can, they don't consider it purged, if it's in a, if it's, if it's scanned.
Okay.
There are certain documents you can purge, like you can destroy some documents in seven years, so those would get destroyed. But if there, if there's documents that we need to save, right, so we get approval to purge those and we throw them out, but we don't, but once we scan it.
We get approval after we scan them.
Right, well, no, so the documents that are purgable.
Well, yeah, purgable ones, but the 100-year documents.
The 100-years documents, they have to be scanned. And then once they're scanned, they're considered.
We don't have approval yet, we're in the process.
We're still working on all this, but it's going to be a lot more efficient and, and definitely a lot better for us, like you said, being able to search for them and things like that.
It's a long process. Can you start with the newer documents first, that as time goes on and you're scanning the older ones, eventually age on, and you should get rid of them?
In 50 years, we don't have to worry about those.
We're not, you saw the pictures from 501.
No, it's a summer project.
Talking like a true government employee.
It's a long, it's a long process. We still, we stay still emailing back and forth. They had to come in and look at the site, look at the files, look at the records, how we keeping them. They physically had to come in and do an investigation.
Now, all the files that have to be, you have to find.
Well, it'll be, it will be in the cloud, and it's cer-, they're, they're backed, they're backed up in another, were they backed up in Atlanta or something?
So can I call the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I get us back to our?
Roll call.
Mr. Addison?
Yes.
Mr. Capellon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. Stiluna?
No.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
But I want my yes with a caveat that we look into what Mr. Kuser said.
I think there's a lot of things that Don said.
A lot of things.
Yeah, I want the caveat, it's a yes only if we look into.
You can't have a conditional yes. It's either a yes or a no.
Okay, then I can put no.
You want to put no?
I thought we were going to put no.
Trans, what do you got, Mariana?
Okay, so, as I said before, and actually, I guess, did we already vote on the job descrip-, oh, no, we're going to vote on it right now with me. So I guess I have a motion to approve a job description for the transportation dispatcher.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. So we did meet, we did discuss this new job description and the creation of this position and what it'll mean for the department, so the committee is recommending it to the board tonight. And as I mentioned before, actually, I guess we should call the motion and then I'll do a little committee report.
You already did. I was seconded.
No, I mean, maybe we should vote on the motion before I give a committee report on something that's got nothing to do with it.
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Questions for the?
Yeah, I guess, two questions. Number one, if we're, if we're voting on a job description, does this mean it's fair game to go hire somebody?
Or is this just voting for the job description and that's like how it is?
We probably would post it and you're going to have to approve the employee. Let me bring you back a little bit.
So yes, it would, it'd be fair game for them to post the position.
So I'd like to get an understanding of why.
All right, let me bring you back a little bit. We, do you, I don't know if you're, I'm sure you remember when we had a reduction of a, of one mechanic, we went and replaced it with a half-time mechanic, things like that. But what's happening is, there's, there's time, we have to, we have to cover the, the radio and the phones the entire time the buses are out. So what we're doing now is we're taking a mechanic, and we were doing this before, mechanics were doing this kind of work, and I'm watching, I go down there a lot, and I'm seeing a mechanic underneath a bus working on whatever, a brake line or something, having to get out from under the bus, going over to the dispatch unit and talk about, well, you know, bus number 22, report to here to pick up this kid. And I, and I just was kind of surprised that that's the way we were functioning. So with the reduction in the staff and the benefits of that person, this would be a part-time position, probably somewhere in the $15 an hour range, to have somebody instead of a mechanic, you know, who makes $65,000 or something with benefits, handling something like answering a phone and answering the, the radio. It allows them to free them up to do those jobs more efficiently, and it'll allow us to manage the phones actually better, and, and it will actually still be saving money from.
Yeah, so we were told in committee that it's about a four-hour-a-day job, about probably a $15 an hour, so about $10,000 a year, to keep our mechanics that earn much more than that doing what they need to be doing, and, you know, at a, you know, a lesser cost to have this job also accomplished.
And he's, well, he can answer the phone too, but a lot of times, he's out too. I mean, believe it or not, he has to drive the bus sometimes, and he has to do other kinds of work that's not in the office, so it'll help. Another, another thing is having that extra person with, with, right now, we would hire somebody who has their CDL, so that you can use them in the, in the event where a bus breaks down or whatever, to drive another bus out. We, sometimes we get, we get to the point where we don't have enough people to do these things, and, and we did cut, we did cut that half of person, so now the hours are a little different, and there's not as much people in the building as there were.
So is this, when you say four hours a day, are we talking like two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon?
I think we're going to have to be flexible. I mean, the, the ideal situation would probably be that, if we could find somebody, but our, our prime-time problems are in the afternoon. Our morning works okay. Our afternoon is when our guys leave. Like if you start, if you start your day at 6:00 in the morning, and we've already shuffled them around to try to make it more efficient, but if you start your day at 6:00, your day's over at 2:00, you know, so, but the buses are still out on the road till 5:00, 4:00, 4-ish, something like that, then we do have the late buses and those other things, so we need somebody there. So we'll work on the, the timing of it, and if we can get the right person, and that we, having somebody else with the CDL would be really important, so that the person can go out and pick up kids and do a run. It happens all the time, you know, somebody's called out sick at the last minute, and you don't have another guy to drive the bus, so it would, it would be helpful.
Well, then, should it be not preferred but required? Because right now, we have preferred but not required. Preferred but not required.
Well, I think it is preferred. I mean, we'd love to have it, and, but, you know, depends on what you get. I mean, you're only, we're not paying such a high salary, so we feel like we get it, but I wouldn't want to stop it if we didn't, you know, still, it would solve, it would solve like three-quarters of our problems, and still leave another thing dangling, but still better.
So you say we're getting a lot more calls in the afternoon, is that why you're focused?
Yeah, we do.
I'm confused, because I feel like you'd get probably about the same amount of calls in the morning or afternoon.
For some reason, the afternoon, the afternoon problems are different. I guess, I guess, you know what, we have these split-shift bus drivers, we have a lot of people that only do the afternoon run, you know, I mean, if you're working three hours, sometimes you call out, you know, more than you might if you're working a full day, things like that.
Do you think we're going to be able to find somebody to pay $15 an hour that has a CDL that's going to work four hours a day?
We have somebody that's interested already that I didn't even realize, that's a part-time bus driver for us in the morning, so it might, it might work out.
Then we got to replace.
No, he's a part-time in the morning.
If we're only getting four hours in the afternoon, not two and two.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we'll max it out so that, we'll make sure it doesn't go over the benefits limit, so he might, if he's working three hours first in the morning, he may only have to be able to work two hours in the afternoon, but we'll come up with a plan for that.
So I know this isn't directly related, but semi-directly is. Can you pull, and you don't have to have it tonight, but can you pull some stats on how many calls we've gotten on that answering service that we're paying for monthly?
We're not getting, we're not getting a lot of phone calls on those, on the answering service.
Shocked.
We've been managing, true, we've been managing these phone calls.
I was going to say, the last time I asked, I thought it was.
Zero. Was it zero?
We've been.
Two.
Maybe last.
What are the calls that come in?
Three, the most.
I direct that one.
Yeah, but I mean, so I'd like to understand, how many calls we're getting in, are those calls like, hey, I want to ask a question that I can ask during the business hours, or, hey, I can't find my kid? Those are obviously two big differences.
A lot of time, these calls come in after, after 5:00, and a couple of weeks ago, I got one, oh, I forgot my cell phone, oh, I forgot my kid's violin.
Yeah, those are not, I'm not paying $70 a month for.
I forgot my kid's violin. We don't teach strings in this district. That was a big deal while I was on the board.
Planned it during lunch.
And my son plays a violin.
Non-emergency situation. For the parents, it could be an emergency, get music instrument.
Well, we did discuss that in transportation, not at this last meeting, but several meetings ago, and we said we were going to have another big summer before it goes back in the budget.
The discussion was to try it out and see how many calls we get.
Yeah.
We, we committed to a year, and if we don't like it, we'll not renew it, if it's not worth it.
And that's what I have seen, that is, for the money that we're paying, I don't think that we're getting enough of the phone calls.
Good to know. Any other questions about the dispatcher job description? Roll call.
Mr. Addison?
Yes.
Mr. Capellon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
No.
Mrs. Stiluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Okay, before you move on to go to the cause.
I was going to go to committee reports.
Okay. Well, I'm going to jump the line then.
Okay.
Since I'm the last one on the agenda here.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. The other part that we discussed in committee during transportation was we did discuss two-tier busing again, and it was pretty much discussed tonight earlier, and Mr. Forte even brought up the one other plan we discussed. There had been a Plan A and a Plan B on the table, and we did discuss also in committee that, you know, a sort of a Plan C, which would be moving value pretty much back to where it was. We were at 7:41, and we could maybe move back to 7:45 now. I know this year it's earlier, it's like 7:31.
7:30.
And, and to split the difference between Lakeview and Riverview, to get them in alignment, so, but as I said, Mr. Forte covered it, and with a, with a goal of trying to get, have no students get on any bus before 7:00 AM would be like a goal to this Plan C still, which would be a much improvement over this year and closer to what we had a year before.
Our earliest kid is 6:30, so if we can make our earliest kid 7:00, that would give a little extra time, plus reduce the amount of time the kids are on the bus too, is another thing we're trying to do.
So I'm not really sure how we decide which one we want them, I mean, are we continuing to research all avenues?
Well, what did the committee come back with?
Well, the committee was only two people, and the committee said we'd present it to you.
Didn't have any recommendation?
I personally.
Nothing?
After, no. I mean, we as a, as a unit don't have a recommendation. I mean, I think we all have some reflection on what was said to us at the last board meeting, and for me, I definitely have a line in the sand that it's not worth moving forward with if the kids are getting up earlier and going into before care, because that defeats the purpose. I don't know what the percentage is. If it's twenty percent of the kids are still doing that, if it's thirty percent, and I don't know how we collect that data. Even if you do a survey, I'm not really sure if you get that full data. So, I mean, that's for me personally, that I wouldn't want to move forward with either of the other scenarios. This one I would move forward with because it basically is, you know, where we've been at all this time.
Yeah, I think that, uh, I mean, it's not lost what was said at the last meeting. And I don't know about the rest of the board, but every single place I've gone over the last two weeks or so, I think. So what's with that, uh, two-tier busing, or the joke about the double-decker busing?
Well, yeah, you can't go anywhere without hearing about it.
Kids saying stuff to me, it's football meetings, it's wrestling, it's pretty much everywhere I've been.
Nobody's called me.
Nothing? Yeah. So, so the, you know, in all, in all transparency, you know, the first time I heard it, or I heard something, you know, before we even had our last meeting, you know, I said, well, you know, that's not really an argument for good or bad for the education of the kid, but it's a matter of convenience, right? That's the way I sort of thought about it. And then the more and more I talk to people, certainly with people who came out, and even sort of hearing it tonight, yeah, well, I mean, convenience is a, a major factor in what we try to do for the families of the town, not just, it's a well-roundedness of the students that we have to worry about. You know, I think my kids, I think all of our kids do some sort of sport activity, or, or, uh, music, or something. And it is impactful to the family to push that back later. To Stacy's point, the boys, I think it was closer to six thirty that they were done by the time they rolled up to mats. And that's, you know, that's tough to, to make them go later. Um, you know, when, when Steve and I talked about this idea of, of having a, um, a, a time structure that was somewhat of a compromise in going back a little bit later for the middle school students, which, you know, impacts me, and going a little bit earl, later for Lakeview and a little bit earlier for Riverview, which again, sort of impacts me. Um, I thought about the convenience part of it, but I thought it was a good overall solution because it does ultimately give us what we want from a teacher perspective and allow them to articulate better and not have the Riverview versus Lakeview scenario that we tend to still have. Um, I think it's a good compromise. I think to Mary Ann's point, I, I think the more and more I thought about the other solution, although I think there is some good in it, you know, at the end of the day, I don't know if it's gonna be as practical as we want it. And the idea of having something that's a compromise and still gives us some of the victory, uh, is, is a good thing. But, that comes with a huge caveat, which is to, to do a two-tier, two-tier busing, we still need to cut a lot of stops.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, this is still gonna be a significant amount of work internally to figure out. And as was brought up tonight and previously, and in committee and everything else, I mean, we are gonna have to look at, you know, that was my number, I will say, my number one concern when it was first brought up in committee was creating mega stops. Because in my time on the board, they have been an issue for us. So, I mean, yes, I'm willing for us to continue forward because there are such great benefits to aligning the two schools educationally from an articulation standpoint. To continue to look to see if it's feasible to do.
Yeah, I agree. And so, but, I mean, that's still, before it goes out on the Facebook or anything like that, it still needs to be investigated. It still needs to be considered. There's a lot of...
There's no voting on it tonight, but to consider keep spending administrative time investigating.
So, that being said, um, I think that I would agree with this idea of the two different starts that are more similar to what they have been in the past than not, so you can tell whomever that they were, oh, it was over here. You can tell people that, you know, people listen to what they have to say.
Yeah, that is what we discussed in committee, and that's...
That's my opinion.
Yeah, and I would, I would also say, I've had a significant amount of discussions with everybody on this board, administration, parents, um, a lot of people that would be affected by this. And, um, I, I thank everybody, first of all, I thank the board for looking into this and the administration for spending a lot of time, because at the end of the day, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion over what initiated this, and I want to make it very clear that what initiated this was what were the best kids, what was the best for the students, period. Period. There was no, hey, how can we save, save money, Mr. Forte? Come to me with a solution. That didn't happen. Um, we're not going to try to sneak in a quick vote on this. This is a long discussion, and we're doing it purposefully in the public to hear feedback. Um, I've gotten a lot of feedback, and I will tell you that there were a lot of things that were brought to me that were really beneficial for me to understand because I don't have a middle school student. I've got three kids in elementary school. I don't understand what it means to have a middle school student. And I thank the parents that brought to, their attention to things that I would have never thought about. Um, the amount of homework these kids get, the, um, the, the amount of extracurriculars, the fact that you push everything back, these are all things that are significant, and, and I feel the same way that, um, um, I, I agree with looking at the articulation between, between the elementary schools. I think we've had a lot of discussion on this in general. Um, and it's significantly important for our students to have a similar education experience. I like the fact that they're individualized at the schools, and they have different personalities to different fields of the schools, but at the end of the day, the educational benefit should be the same for both schools. And I truly think there's a benefit of having the teachers meet more together and articulate between themselves. So, I think that, um, that I, I, I feel the same way as Ms. Lindsay and Mr. Napoloni, that I know, I appreciate the fact that the administration and the committees have all looked and come up with, uh, something that pushes the Valley View time back a little bit as an, an option, and also articulates the elementary schools. Um, so it's a, it's kind of a compromise that I think we all, at least, I should say, I think I would support more of. Um, I agree that there's a long road ahead to look at bringing these, uh, looking at two-tier busing, and I'm not saying based upon, I don't have all the data in front of me, but I would say that, um, in general, I would support that more than others as far as looking forward and, and moving into that direction, so. But I thank everybody here and everybody, parents, for giving feedback for, to, uh, to make me understand that.
So, fast forwarding a little bit, is there anybody who's not okay with the administration pursuing or investigating further this Plan C, I guess is what they're sort of calling it? This idea of potentially the middle school starting at seven forty-five, the elementary school starting at fifteen, which would...
Eight twenty.
Sorry. And, uh, having a, a two-tiered system in terms of buses, which obviously there is some sort of collateral consideration as well.
I, I think there is one thing we need to look at, is, is really understand the effect on Lakeview. Because there are a significant amount of students that use the aftercare, and I don't know if that fifteen minutes makes a difference to a lot of parents, so, but I, that's not a no for me, but I'm just, it's just an investigation we need to look into a little more.
Yeah, and all of those things. I mean, we've, we started down that road of considering sort of all components to it. But, um, is there anybody who's not in favor of...
I, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
And make sure the next time, I wasn't toward the last meeting for moving it forward, okay? I've had a lot of reasons. Um, I, I think we gotta get more, more details than we've had. We're kind of just like rolling along with this, and the questions come up, and, um, two-tier busing, last time we talked, it was elimination of thirty percent of the bus stops? Right, something like that?
Yeah, sure. It's gonna be a reduction.
So, it's thirty percent, okay? And one of the concerns I had is extra traffic at the bus stops, extra traffic at the schools. And we, we did have the counts now, we're averaging two hundred drop-offs per school, for two schools right now.
Approximately.
Approximately.
That was all three combined, though.
That was all three combined, yeah. So, there's a significant traffic at the schools, and historically, it's going good now, but we've had a police intervention at the bus stops because of congestion, people couldn't get out to go to work. Um, we had, and the same thing at the schools, we've had, you know, drop-off issues there too. So, we need to have some type of estimate, projection of what's gonna happen if you eliminate thirty percent of the bus stops. You know, you can't just do it and find out all of a sudden, uh, the, the, the two hundred becomes four hundred. Maybe it's three hundred, maybe it's five hundred. I, I don't know. But it's tremendous amount of increased tech, uh, traffic. So any fuel efficiencies you get with the savings of, the bus is doing less stops, you're gonna have more people with their cars, uh, at the bus stops and, and idling. So, that's, that's a big...
I agree, we discussed that in committee, you know.
It's a big, that's a big safety, uh, concern for me. And most of these, um, you know, bus stops are along hazardous routes and everything. So, you're gonna have, you cut out enough bus stops, you're gonna have more cars at the bus stops, you're gonna have more cars dropping off the kids at the school, especially Riverview, which is, uh, which is costly. I really think that's something we gotta, you know, drill, drill down on. And, um, you know, if we change the times again, we should try to put that in concrete, because all of a sudden, I've talked to a lot of people about this, and, you know, you don't want to be, appear inconsistent with the public, keep on changing the bus schedule every, every year. You know, I think once you do something, you gotta keep it, keep it in place of that's, you know, we, we think it out, it's the right thing to do, let's do it. But let's not keep on changing it and tweaking it, because families have very tight, tight schedules. Um, in terms of moving forward with the, um, with the start time at Valley View, you know, a couple of minutes one way or the other, no big deal. But, I've talked to a lot of parents, some are reluctant to sign the petition, they want to stay underneath the radar for a lot of different reasons of what they do in town and everything, but, um, I, I haven't met anybody that's really an advocate for this, okay? And so many different things. If you start in school a half an hour later, uh, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna stay a half an hour later. And that just trans, translates into the family evening. Um, we talked with the sports impact here. I mean, all these sports guys that do, what, PAL softball, lacrosse, soccer, you know, they're all volunteers, they don't get paid, and most of these practices start at six o'clock. So now, they're not gonna start a practice at six thirty or seven o'clock. A lot of these travel teams double up on their practices. Some of these kids start their practice at seven thirty. And, you know, they gotta get home, shower, do homework, study for tests, so it's a tremendous negative impact for the family. The, uh, startschoollater.org, I've been on their website, a very progressive group down in Maryland there. And it's a one, you know, one size fits all. Uh, they're, they're pushing this across the country. Um, and, you know, each district, and the parents gotta make up their minds what, what's best for their kids. And we heard from all the parents the last time, the kids aren't getting enough sleep, that's really parent management of what their, their, their kids are doing. And you look at the, uh, the pediatric study, I mentioned it the last time, there were a lot of other factors preventing kids from getting a good night's sleep. And starting school later was, you know, not the a hundred percent solution, so, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to keep on moving that forward. I've heard from enough parents, you gotta petition two hundred, twenty, fifty, what, and, and probably more coming. I mean, most of your parents are, are not for this. So you continue to talk about it and everything, creates a lot of angst and stress in the community, and I, I just don't think it's necessary. Look at the two-tier busing, but I'd put an end to starting the school, middle school a half an hour later.
Well, I think the consensus is to move away from the idea of starting it that much later. I think the idea is to move Valley View back to what it had originally been, and move, uh, Lakeview back fifteen minutes, or twenty minutes, and Riverview up fifteen minutes.
Sure, sure.
I think if, if we all feel that way, if we all feel that way, I'll put something in the Friday folder today saying that, I mean, on Friday, saying that this, the idea of moving the, the drastic method is dead. We're not, we're not pursuing that any further, but we are pursuing, still pursuing a two-tier, looking at some minor adjustments to the schedule of the time, give or take fifteen minutes, or fifteen minutes max, something like that I'll put out. Um, if everybody is in agreement that this thing's dying on the vine, then we do that.
Oh, yeah, I think that's like a...
Can we make sure when you put that in that you're talking about the reasons why we're looking at two-tier busing, not that we're trying to save money, or that we're trying to eliminate stops, that there is advantages, even if we don't move the middle school back to eight-thirty start, there's advantages of it, and these are what they are? I mean, just, it doesn't have to be detailed, but it should have to be, I want to make sure that the, the correct story is getting out to the public and to the parents.
Any impact on the after-school activities? I mean, the students getting out at two-thirty, we don't start after-school sports until three-thirty or four, the games are, so they're in the building for an hour to an hour and a half before the games start. So moving it fifteen, twenty minutes really does not pack, it doesn't impact the after-school activities, because we really do, um, I know we're saying it's pushing back the, the games an hour later, but it doesn't, it, it won't, because they sit around for an hour, hour and a half before the game even starts. You know, so the game isn't going to...
They're warm up.
Warm up. I'm just getting an idea that it's not, um, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, the game would still start at the same times and activities that they do now. I mean...
Pious in fifteen years is not a problem.
It wouldn't be like, right, it wouldn't be really like...
Good, so we're good with, uh, any, do you have an objection, objection of Steve moving that direction?
Like, maybe before there's any decision, how about that survey? Because maybe eight o'clock, see, it's all, now it's all shades of gray in the middle. I don't know. I mean...
Well, if you put out a survey and said, "Lakeview parents, if your time is now eight twenty," what would you need morning care now? Would you, what would, what would happen to the afternoon care? Is that the point? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes. Like half hour, you know, like option A, B, C, and just survey.
Riverview the same thing. What would this do to your day?
I don't know that we're talking about a significant change.
Oh, you mean, is this, this minor change? Do a survey for that?
I think that's what she's getting at. I'm just trying to...
I thought you were talking about the major change.
No, I'm saying, I wouldn't throw eight o'clock out. That, that doesn't seem major to me if I was Valley View parent.
No, we're not talking about, we're talking about seven forty.
No, I'm saying...
He's talking about not going with Plan C. That's why the committee didn't have a recommendation.
I'm, I'm telling you that based off what I'm hearing, I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, so...
Well, then, fill out the survey and give us your feedback.
I could do that by voting no, right now.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to put it to a vote right now, I wouldn't vote for the drastic. I would vote for the C, Don, I would.
Yeah.
I would vote for moving back closer to what we had a year ago, which we all live with. And yes, I understand and agree. Once we do this, I don't want to hear about a bus change.
That's fair.
I also want to make sure...
Again, in my time on this...
I want to make sure you guys understand, I agree with you, and it doesn't look good when you keep changing things, but we made a conscious decision that, to, to leverage that extra time we picked up in the contract and not put it off a year. We did say that, like, should we take advantage of this extra instructional time for a year, or wait till next year? I thought it was a no-brainer, Sandy and I said, "No, let's take advantage of it, knowing that we're gonna do something next year, whether it's two-tier and drastic changes, or at least moving it back." So I just want, I, I get it, and I'm sensitive to that. I don't think we should change it a thousand times, but I, I don't think there's that many people, there might be some, one maybe, that think that it's not a good idea to leverage that extra time for a year.
I know one.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to, to look at the two-tier busing. Okay, but I, but I think we have to look at all, all the implications, especially the, the traffic, because we have to eliminate...
I agree, that's what we need to say that we're gonna...
So, I'm forward looking into it, but not making decisions to do it until we have all the facts and figures.
Right. Well, let's all look at it in this one scenario.
What do I sign here?
We've given them the permission to continue to look at it.
Yes. Because I think until we actually see the bus stops and how big they are and where they're gonna be, I don't know, it's all...
And maybe it's not thirty percent, maybe it's twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and maybe we don't cut as many buses and...
There's nothing stopping it.
It's a cost, and we add another bus. But we still get the educational plus, um...
Yeah, we all realize that at the end of the day, we're gonna have a school or two schools in this district that are gonna start at eight-twenty or eight-thirty. Right? It's what we have now, right? So it's about understanding which ones we think are appropriate for that, how we can adjust the other times, and we can get the, the most benefit for each one of the students. So I, 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 I'm in support of looking deeper into the seven forty-five, eight-twenty, or whatever those numbers happen to be.
Plan C.
Plan C.
Plan C, all right. Good? Any other committee reports? I'm moving on, sorry. I figured we're at where we at, need to be at. Any other committee reports? No? Correspondence? There's nothing? Uh, discussion items? We have to talk about CUSAC.
Yep, Board Office is...
We're at Board Office office after...
No, let's, let's leave it on there. It's good, it's important. Go ahead, go through, I don't want to do your job.
Oh, Board Office...
Board Office, we did.
Board Office, we talked about trailers, we talked about school time changes, we talked about, right? School times? Oh, no, we should talk about school time. I'm joking. Um, CUSAC.
CUSAC is the way that the state measures the quality control of the district, whether or not you're providing a quality program. There are all these different areas that you get graded on. This district scores very high. As a matter of fact, this year we scored one hundred percent. The year before, we scored something like ninety-seven percent in these different indicators. There are financial indicators, personnel indicators, curricular indicator, all these different indicators, meaning like our curriculum is always up to date, it's always approved by the board by a certain time, all of our job descriptions are up to date and approved by the Board of Education. Our finances are in good order, we have, we have a, uh, job descri, uh, we have a, uh, what's that thing called again that you have in your hand? The audit? We have an audit every year that's approved by the board and discussed. All the required, um, all the required presentations are always done. There is something called a, a CUSAC equivalency this year, which is great, it came from, um, some changes made in the, in the governor's office, that said that districts that are scoring highly can do a three-year period now and not have to go through the CUSAC period every year. So, but we do have to bring this out in a public meeting and see if there's any feedback or anything like that on it. Our district has always scored highly on it going back years, and all the things that are in there, we are on top of and handling, and the board is definitely aware of everything and on top of it. So this is just a step in the process that we had to talk about in a public meeting and see if there's any comments.
Sir, any objection to considering going into this three-year CUSAC equivalency or anything?
How much does it cost to do it every year?
Well, it's just time.
It truly saves about three months of your life.
It's a lot of effort.
It saves a lot of time.
Because you have to pull every file from, it's an incredible amount of time. It's exciting when they tell you your district qualifies, because only a certain percentage are going to qualify for not having to do it every year.
So just out of curiosity, because obviously this is my district, my own experience of that, as administrators, have you been able to places where CUSAC, you get failing grades or you have issues with all of these things, like the audits, job descriptions, or all these relatively strict things?
Yeah, yeah, it happens. It happened in a district very close to us, where there was, you know, failed CUSAC.
And they give you a period of time to remediate the issue, and you'll have to come back and report it again.
One of my previous districts, not while I was superintendent, thank God, but when I was working in a previous district after I left, about a year later, they, they failed CUSAC by like, something like a 20%. You need a 90, something like that, along those lines. So, yeah, you can fail CUSAC.
So for that reason, I think you wanted every year to make sure you're keeping up with everything, if you can have that taken into account.
Says the guy who's leaving the district. It's unbelievable.
Or, or you might drop the things that are important to you, you're red and butter, right? And you make sure you're on some sort of a use cycle more often, right? If you can.
Let me clarify something, too. We still have to do the statement of assurance, the thing that you guys approve every year. It's just a matter of them coming out. So in other words, internally.
They don't come out every year.
Well, they come out, they're going, they would come out. We're getting a three-year reprieve in addition.
So we're going to, so we'll skip to six. Forever, or will it be every six years?
It'll be, we're getting a three-year extension. We, in other words, the district would be up for a full CUSAC review this year, meaning the county comes out and they go through all your stuff, like Sandy was saying. This gives you like a three-year extension because of our history of doing it, you know, properly. That's what it's for.
Yes.
Okay, no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned.
And it's, and we've always had one.
Any, all right, so we're past that part?
Yep.
Other, other?
I have an other other.
What do you got?
Okay, in my time on the board, I've attended all the PTA meetings and had discussions with various different PTA presidents at different times in the past, my time in the board, and as a parent here, so the past 15, 16 years. And I didn't realize until a couple of weeks ago that it may not be, every board member may not be aware of this, but, so, I want to bring to your attention, and I know one of the other board members actually brought it to superintendent, and I thank you for putting together the document for the board, that we have a certain amount of families in town that by the paperwork that we do in districts to qualify for free or reduced milk, would, if we were a school district that provided lunches, would qualify them for free or reduced lunches. We don't have a hot lunch program here. We, we have PTAs that provide a service in all my time in the district. It's been different in every school, how many days they offer and everything else. And true to form right now, the schools offer different things to the families that are struggling and that would qualify for free or reduced lunches if we had a program. And I don't know, you know, for anonymity or whatever, I mean, some of the PTAs have 18 families that they deal with, some of the PTAs have 47 families that they deal with, and some of the PTAs have six families that they deal with. And some of the PTAs offer one day of free lunch, some offer all five of reduced lunch, and some offer only three of the five days of reduced lunch. And some of the PTAs, they all feel very strongly. And in speaking with the PTA that's the largest impact, they don't, even though it's a huge impact to them, I mean, approximately, they put out close to $2,000 a month to feed kids that are disadvantaged in this community, and they don't want them in school hungry. That affects their learning probably more than 10 minutes of sleep for one or the other. So, I mean, I just, I think it's important for the board to be aware of how much money our PTAs are raising to feed kids. And I don't know, I actually, you know, wrote to the legal department at New Jersey School Boards to find out how other districts deal with this, and they gave me the pure legal definition of if kids qualified for early intervention preschool, and all things that don't really happen here in town. But I don't know how we feel about it. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I mean, I worry that, you know, if the families stay and continue to age through our system, these kids will have real problems when they come up to Valley View. They're in elementary schools now where our PTAs are stronger and raise many more funds and can afford to, you know, spend thousands of dollars a year. You all got the chart. You know, feeding kids, when they come up to Valley View, this is not, I mean, you're having more, many more parents back to work, and it's not a PTA that raises the same magnitude of funds as other PTAs. They'll never be able to continue to feed these kids. And I don't know if there's something, you know, we can do as a board.
Are these 18 kids, they're getting lunch now?
I didn't say 18 kids.
Not every day. 18 kids.
It's 47 families, which is not 47 children.
Okay, so it was 18 kids was the number I remember.
In this building, in Valley View, there are 18 kids.
Okay, whatever. So, well, you take it school by school, are some of these kids not eating lunch some days?
So I've been told that, that there are families that will not send their kids to school if they cannot provide lunch. So there are kids that have significant absenteeism because their families cannot afford lunch.
All right.
Which is a problem.
And there are kids that come to school that either consistently get the free, you know, peanut butter and jelly, not a, they're not free cable, obviously. You know, that the school provides, and the PTAs actually provide money to the nurses to provide that food also.
That was in the document, too.
All right, so, so we know who the kids are, they're not being sent to school sometimes because they don't have lunch.
And actually, the PTAs don't know who the kids are. It's our administrators' end, because it's based off our collection of data on the free and reduced nourishment. You have to file the paperwork to qualify.
Okay, but so these kids stay home and don't eat at home?
I.
Yes. That's what we've been told.
I don't, I don't have that information.
Well, I think you have to look into, you know, if they're state aid available, what we need to do to make sure these kids get the nutrition they need, at least when they're in school. I mean, you can't, you know, follow them home and see what they're doing at dinnertime, but you certainly don't want a kid missing school because they don't have lunch and then they're, they're not eating lunch at home. I mean, that's just.
Well, that's right, and there are even districts that provide breakfast because they know the kids aren't getting the nutrition they need at home.
Yeah, but I.
I don't think we qualify as a district that's being forced to do that, but I'm asking the board, is it something you want to look into even if we're not forced to do it? Because for me, it's the right thing to do so all kids could learn.
Yeah, and so I was in the conversation with Mariana at one of the PTAs where the other reason why this kind of ignited a conversation was, at one of the schools, they've had more than double the amount of kids this year than last year. So the number seems to be increasing, but we don't know why, right? Who knows? But I will tell you that when I heard this, I didn't know this. I didn't know what, how we dealt with it. I've done some research, and if we decided to go into the free and reduced lunch program, it's a whole can of worms that we are not ready as a district right now to handle because there's nutritional facts that you, we can't just provide the lunches. Like, my kids get mac and cheese one day a week. That does not qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. So we would have to start a whole new program that would open up a huge can of worms. However, I think that when I look at this and I look at the numbers, I look at the dollar figures, and I look at a district board here that we supported reducing the extracurricular fees, which I think was important, too, on a, what, $20,000 or something like that?
About $20,000.
Yeah. I mean, this is maybe another $20,000. I'll tell you, I think this is $20,000 that is well worth spending as a district. It's my opinion, I think that we should be taking care of all the kids as best we can, and if they need help, we should be there to help them.
You know what I want to point out, too, from that document I shared with you guys? This is all about data and discussions. There's not decisions being made now. I want everybody to know, like, this is just a discussion about data, and the data is collected through the PTA. There's not names involved, it's just some data. And Mike, you make a good point, and we do spend $20,000 on other stuff, right? Okay. The problem with it, though, is for $20,000, we're only feeding the kids in one of the schools once a day.
Yeah.
Once a week, not once a day.
Right. It wouldn't be $20,000, or it could be, and we could offer something twice a week at all three schools, and the PTAs could still decide to do whatever they want, but.
And look, look at the other one, too, where one of the schools is charging a small fee to the kids, the other two aren't. One's giving lunch three days a week, one's giving lunch one day a week, one's giving lunch five days a week. So this will grow, and I think what it's, what it's pointing out to is that this may be something, this is like the tip of the iceberg here. We're finding out some information. This could be a $30,000 liability, and maybe it's time to really look at this as maybe, you know, the demographics has changed, and maybe one of our schools becomes a free, free and reduced lunch school. Maybe all of them do. Now, if that happens, there will be other, there's negative ramifications to that, meaning all PTA lunches will cease. You can't be in the lunch program and provide PTA lunches, meaning that you will now lose that revenue from the PTAs. So, again, data, discussion, I think we need to continue this discussion. I asked Damaris to put this on the Finance Committee agenda, and we're going to, we're going to talk about it there and, and really decide what's best. Is it, is it a good idea to do 30,000 and provide it? Or, or should we really look at this on the bigger picture and say, wait, we have, you know, you're talking about substantial number of kids that are eligible.
For the Finance Committee meeting, will you have, I mean, once again, in my time on the board, we were at one point two kids away from having to open up free and reduced lunch, and at least back then, which it's been at least six years, it was when Lakeview was up over 800 students, and we were like two kids away in that building only. I thought it meant you had to do it all across the district.
We're going to look into it.
So, anything could have changed, because things change from month to month with what the state hoop, what hoops the state wants us to jump through. So, yeah, I'd love to know what the numbers are, you know, how close we are and everything else.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, at a minimum, I think, like Steve's saying, you know, we've got one school that's providing it one day a week and one is providing something five days a week. I, I want the PTAs to be able to function independently, but I'd like to make sure that these kids are getting some continuity across our district, and if the board can help provide some of that, like Mariana said, if it's a matter of we provide funding for part of it and then the PTAs provide part of it, it, it's an important enough topic that I think deserves a conversation in committee and understanding of exactly what our options are.
Right. I mean, and, you know, there are different amounts at each school, and I guess lucky at this point in time that it's the school with the PTA that brings in the most funds, that has the most students, and has the ability to. I'm not sure, you know, all the PTAs could have the ability to don't, to put this much funds towards.
But there's enough of a population there that we can't rely on an ad hoc kind of, you know, PTA to kind of step in piecemeal. I mean, I think we need to come up, like Mike said, with a consistent plan that addresses these kids' needs from Monday to Friday, you know, weekend and weekend. However that is, whatever that works.
So, I think the Finance Committee should look into it. I mean, the one thing that, you know, as much as I've been in the district for how many years now? Eight years or whatever it is, and on the board for however many years, I've never known that information.
Well, that's why, when he said it to me that night when I was talking to him, I was like, I didn't realize that, I mean, I've been there in the PTA meetings, not at all three schools, but in two of the three schools, when they've actually discussed this, do they have the funds this year to do this? How much? How many days? I mean, they go, they struggle with this every year.
So, and, and so my point, my point is that, you know, I've been, I live in this town that amazes me every time that we have some sort of tragedy, or, you know, recently a family, you know, close to us, the house burned down, and every time there's something or a need, it's not, it's almost universal that the town steps up and does things. And my, my frustration, if I can use that word, and it's not fair to use the word, but I'll use it, is that I didn't know about it. And I promise you that had the PTA ever said that, I forget what we even spend on lunch when my kid goes and we buy him lunch twice a week or whatever it is, if it were even double, or they said, I need a check for this amount of money because we're helping those who are less fortunate in our district, and I'm not, this is just a statement, that I know hundreds of people that would open up their checkbook in a heartbeat. I mean, right now, I feel like, okay, well, this is, my donation's going to go up.
And I don't think the PTAs ever.
And it's not.
Came out of the PTA to talk about it because it was easy, but when you're talking about $15,000 for entities that raises 40.
Right, right.
It's a huge amount of money going to feed.
But my.
Yes, a portion of the kids, and that's what they, I, I agree with you. Maybe it should have been public long ago, but it wasn't because they all felt like they could handle it.
And it's not their problem.
Yeah, it doubled, it's probably, it was probably tough.
It's not their problem, but the statement, I think, needs to be made, then, that, you know, we do have people in this town that are less fortunate. We do have, you know, families that go through periods that need something more. And, you know, I think it's incumbent on us as the town that we are to do those things, not just the Board of Ed. And of course, I agree that, you know, the Board of Ed should do those things, too. But I'd like it for us to get out and at least if the PTA isn't going to ask for help, let us help them then. And let's spread it out to whoever's watching and to our circles, and let them know that these things are out there. And if my donation goes specifically to helping these families, other than some fare or something like that, that's fine, too. But I think, I think we'll get a lot of wallets open by doing that.
And Mr. Forte brought up a really good point, too. You know, the PTAs deal with a lot of businesses, some of them are in town.
A lot of them.
And if you went to the town business that is providing these lunches, that we're giving thousands of dollars to, to give the lunches, and you explain the situation, they may open, be, you know, generous, too, with helping out and donating some of these meals to, to help the kids, so. I think we, we should look at all the options on the table. I think it's just a step one in a process of trying to help out these kids.
Yeah, I think there's a lot, and I think that the bottom line is that we should be doing everything we can, and that's not just limited to what the PTAs do.
And Damaris and I will look into the reporting, because those numbers are far greater than what is being reported under No Child Left Behind. I mean, that's, that is not anywhere close to what our disadvantaged population is according to the state. So we need to make sure that we're, all of those kids are being accounted for, because that isn't even close.
Just on the side, I mean, especially little kids, some days they forget their lunches, so.
But these students are identified by our administration, my understanding, based off our free and reduced milk. It's not, I forgot my lunch. That's different. That's to get to go to the nurse's office.
No, I'm saying, as a district, we should have a means to help them get through the day if their parents are working and they don't have a lunch.
We do. That's the snack money that the PTAs give to the nurses, and they go and get cheese and crackers, or peanut butter and jelly, or whatever. The nurses have food when you forget your lunch. This is different. This is.
We can't afford lunch.
And the PTAs don't know who the kids are, and the people serving lunches don't know who the kids are. Nobody, it's, you know, they're identified with the administration, and I don't know how the orders go in, and I don't need to know.
I believe the school nurses order them.
Right, so that no, you know, everybody's privacy is protected, but these kids are getting food.
And as Sandy commented, a lot of the reporting do not have the correct information, because a lot of parents are ashamed to fill out an application, and most of the time, we only report what we can, what we receive. If we don't have an application, then we can't report.
Well, and especially since you only need to apply for milk, which is $12 for the year, even if you don't qualify. So what is it? I'm sorry. That's what my kids work here on.
It's still not much.
Right, but then we get.
I actually asked Steve if we can increase the price.
But that would increase, that increases the amount of money that the district gets.
It's a federal program.
Federal money.
Against.
If they report it, it increases the number, the amount of federal money we get, and if they're not reporting, then we don't, we don't have that money to, I mean, if we knew, we could.
So Mike and, Mike and Mariana, and I think, you know, you weren't, I don't know, I think, but I know.
It was Mike and, do you know that?
But thank you for bringing it to the board's attention and hopefully even the public's opinion, or attention. I think it's, I, I'm amazed every single time that the town steps up to do the right thing for this town. And I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if soon enough we'll have this sort of thing taken care of, whether it be by the board or not, but no kid should have that situation. Any other other? I've got one more. So today's your last day. How many years ago was it that I talked to you into this?
About four and a half years ago.
He, it's, so four and a half years ago, we had a resignation from the board, it was a little bit more than four and a half years ago. And I do recall, I will take the credit for bringing you on the board, and.
And the blame.
And the blame. For the milk people, it's the blame. But Carlos has done, I think, a fabulous job and really stepped up and agreed or disagreed, but always had a valid opinion and well-thought-out opinion. Sometimes he lost his cool and he'd apologize, other times he wouldn't, but, but he, he always did right, as far as I'm concerned, by the district, by these kids like I was talking about. And I know very, very few people who do as much without any sort of credit than he does. And your time on the board has been well worth the effort, I'm sure, that you put in, and I appreciate you being here. And on behalf of the board, I think it is now customary, we've gotten you a clock, to remind you of the time that you've done and everything that you've done for the district. So let me put it to you here.
Thank you.
The guy who just walked in the door?
I'm sorry, what?
The guy who just walked in the door?
I would like to say thank you to Carlos real quick, too. I mean, I think, I'll tell you, being on, up on this table is a lot more hours than I could have ever imagined over a year ago, but he has taught me a lot about how to look at things, a lot about how to be a good board member, and I hope I can live up to what you've done, and you've been a great resource for me, so I will continue to call you, and I'm proud to call you a friend also, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good?
Look, it's a humbling experience when, when the town votes you in and trusts you with the education of its children. And as much as I've learned from folks that have been on the board, like Mariana, and even the new guys that you still learn from, right? Because it's, it's all about different perspective, right? If you're a new board member coming in, just remember, it's about the whole district. And it's a lot of responsibility, you know, there are times you make decisions, and I still think about it even after this vote, Tom. It's not even a district, you know? But it is rewarding, and I think we've done a lot as a board in the short amount of time that I've been here. And these guys, I know what it, what it takes, administrators, you have to put up with seven different personalities, I know it's not easy, but at the end of the day, the job gets done, and the kids are educated. So, and thank you all. I appreciate it.
To the people in the camera. I see a, I see a little, a little glimmer there. If you were wearing your fancy jacket with the handkerchief, I'm sure you'd be dabbling If you were wearing your fancy jacket with the handkerchief, I'm sure you'd be dabbling the eyes right now.
It is, it is good.
He's still calling every Tuesday.
Yeah. In all seriousness, he's done a great job, and I think that it's a very, very thankful job, that I think, saying that selfishly on the board, it's very thankless, but at the same time, it is the most reward that I think of the things that we do or I do, that we get. Less than a year ago, I sat here and said that, you know, this position that I'm sitting in is a year job, as far as I was concerned, and that year is almost up. So, you know, I'll be moving a chair over left or right, or to the corners, or whatever the case is, and I'll gripe and comment under my breath, I'm sure, but the bottom line of it is that I appreciate the opportunity to be sitting here for the year. It gives a tremendous amount of perspective that you don't necessarily have exposure to when you don't sit here. You know, I think we've done a lot of things in this one year to be thinking of the year, I guess, and, you know, capping it off with this idea of the symbolic vote to move to town council, I think, is a, is a big deal, but I appreciate the opportunity to sit here to serve you, seven or six others, to sit next to you and learn a lot from you, and Sandy, especially. And, you know, so next meeting, I'll be sitting somewhere else, and I appreciate the time here, and thank you for the opportunity. So, that is my last statement is that, and my last humorous statement, I guess. We'll open up to public comments now. 9:58, any other comments, I'm sorry, comments from the public? You can talk as long as you like.
Jeanette Body, 73 Mount Pleasant Turnpike. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you so very much for the very positive outcome for the, I know it as the Union Hill School, but 501 Open Accu Road. There are several ways to educate, and I feel that this will be one of them. Hopefully, the historical society will do a fantastic job, and we'll be able to have this building for many generations to come. I'd also like to thank you for your consideration to move to the municipal building. From a taxpayer standpoint, I think it's very, very positive. I see far more positives than negatives, and I feel that depending on how you package it, people will also consider it a very positive move as far as taxpayer, spending taxpayer money. So thank you again, and have a happy new year.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, you're on.
Are we on?
Yeah, you're on.
We are. I want to personally thank the Bodies for the hard work and the effort that they put into basically getting the school to where it is today. I know that Mr. Body came in front of the council and made a very passionate, basically,